Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is the appointed hour six o'clock for the joint meeting of Lexington City School Board and Lexington City Council. Welcome, School Board and Superintendent Walters. Glad you all are with us and thanks for taking care of our most precious treasures in town. Like to call our meeting to order and invite the School Board Chair, Mr. Diette, to call his meeting.
I'd like to call our, the meeting to order for the School Board, Lexington City Schools. Thank you for having us today.
Absolutely. Our twice-a-year get-together in the throes of budget and mayhem that is part of, part and parcel with the pandemic. But I will call on City Manager for any words of wisdom and to introduce pass to the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have much wisdom to offer at this time. I'll keep it brief and I'll ask our school superintendent to proceed with her report.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you. Thank you always for the opportunity for our School Board to join you for a meeting in April to talk about the status of the schools and to look at our budget requests for the upcoming year. As you all are well aware, it's been a most interesting year for us. If you can tell by the color of my hair, it's been a little bit challenging. I think this time last year I was a brunette. So I'll just say that it's been quite a year, learning opportunity for all of us, as well as our staff and our students, our families. And we're coming out of it quite nicely with a very positive third quarter and start of our fourth quarter this year. We have about thirty-six days of school left in the school year, which is quite, quite amazing for a year that's been long but short at the same time. So I'm very happy to be with you this evening. I hope I can provide you with some updates that will be helpful to you as you're making considerations for, for budget for this coming year. So Janie has given me permission to share my screen, so I'm going to bring the presentation up for you all. Hopefully you'll be able to see that. If someone can give me a thumbs up that they can see that well. Thank you, Mr. Diette. I'll roll into the information that I have for you this evening.
Rebecca, just before you launch on that, good transition there and good work. I want to acknowledge Ms. Alexander notified me that she had a bit of an emergency at work and is unable to join us on time, but maybe joining us through the process. But I, as you well know, she is eager and plugged in and knowledgeable and supportive of the schools, but wanted to acknowledge her absence.
All right. Well, thank you. I'll make sure if she has any questions, I'll reach out to her to see if there's anything I can do to help support her understanding as well. I always like to start with just an overview of our schools with regards to enrollment. Our current enrollment for Waddell Elementary School, we're sitting at about three hundred six students, although I believe we enrolled three students today at the elementary school and one or two at the middle school this week. So those numbers continue to climb. So we do have about three hundred six students in grades K through five with one of those students in an alternative placement. What I mean by that is we, we have several students in our division who attend Rivermont Rockbridge as an IEP placement to best suit their needs for a least restrictive environment for their educational services. So we do have one elementary school student who is placed out there. We also have six students on roll at Lilburn Downing who are alternatively placed. A couple of those are actually high school students, but we keep them on roll at Lilburn because we can't keep them on roll at the high school since we don't have those records for, for our students. At the middle school currently about a hundred and sixty-three students, meaning we have about a hundred and fifty-seven under the roof there at Lilburn Downing. And we currently have one hundred fifty-four students in grades nine through twelve at Rockbridge County High School. Our staffing sits pretty similarly to what I shared with you in February. Of course, we have about forty-four employees there at the, at Waddell and about twenty-nine employees at the, at the middle school. Wanted to start this evening just talking a little bit about our plans for return to learn for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. We are, like most school districts across the state, making hopeful plans to return all students to our schools five days a week with a more traditional school schedule than we've been able to have this year. And our school calendar is set to begin with students in place on August seventeenth, and we're gearing up for that already and making initial plans for their return. We are currently planning to return all students in person, K through five and K and six through eight at the middle school. However, we will offer a virtual learning model and plan. And we are contracting with a third-party vendor, Virtual Virginia, which is the Virginia Department of Education's Learning Management System to provide that virtual instruction. One of our largest challenges this year as a very small school district was the need for our teachers to provide both in-person and virtual learning models at the same time throughout the year. We had students coming in and out of virtual and in-person instruction throughout the year. Most excitedly, we started our fourth quarter of school this Monday with ninety percent of our students back in person in our buildings, which is very exciting and higher than most school districts around us. Students to participate in that virtual model that we will offer next year, they will actually apply to be a virtual student for us next year. And there will be some criteria set for those students to be accepted as a virtual learner. We are looking at their academic stability as well as their proven success as a virtual learner during the current school year. Because like every school district, our job is to make sure that our students are engaged and in programs where they can be successful. So we want to make sure that our students, if they are virtual or in-person, are being successful in our schools. We have information going out on Monday to all student families outlining our instructional model and plan for this coming school year, twenty-one, twenty-two. It will have all the details about the virtual learning model as well as information on who to contact if they have questions and the application that we will ask them to submit if they are interested in enrolling as a virtual student next school year. In order to do that, as a, as a virtual Virginia client, Lexington City Schools is able to retain those students on roll as Lexington City School students, but their instruction virtually is provided by Virtual Virginia teachers who are Virginia certified teachers hired by that vendor. And then Lexington City Schools will actually pay tuition for each student who is enrolled in that virtual program, meaning that we receive the ADM funding for that student because they are on roll with us as a city student, but then we would pay out the tuition for them to be able to be instructed through Virtual Virginia. So I don't anticipate having a lot of students who take advantage of that, particularly since we are sitting at ninety or just over ninety percent of our students in person now. I feel like we probably will have a small number, but I should know that number by early June because we will need to enroll them by the first of July at the latest. Tommy and I wanted to make sure that we were able to provide you with a little more information about enrollment and the no-loss funding that I shared with you all about earlier during the year. I know that most of you are aware that no-loss funding was approved by the state to provide funds at the average daily membership or ADM from March twenty-twenty, meaning at that time our enrollment sat around six fifty-six. That was prior to the pandemic and any enrollment loss that we incurred during the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Therefore, our state funds that were provided for this current FY twenty-one budget reflect the six fifty-six ADM from March twenty-twenty. Our FY twenty-two budget, we have designed that and approved that based on a projected enrollment of about six hundred and twenty students. We are using our current class sizes, K through twelve, rolling those students up by grade level. And then we've already enrolled forty-three kindergarteners to date. We usually get closer to fifty by the end of the summer, and I anticipate we'll have probably fifty, if not more, kindergarteners coming in. But rolling those grade levels up and just using those current numbers sits us around six twenty. So we went ahead and based our enrollment on that, although I think we'll probably have more students that return to us. We already know a couple who's coming back from homeschooling. I don't have any idea how many may return to the high school because we, we just need to know what those situations are, and they will be gathering their information in the coming months. But I'm very hopeful that while we budgeted our numbers on six twenty, our enrollment will continue to climb and get us closer back to where we were last spring. Our budget priorities as a school division look very similar to what you saw last year that we presented to you in April. The Lexington City School Board continues to prioritize salary increases for teachers and staff in order for us to compete with other area school divisions and to attract and retain the best possible staff. Last year, as you are aware, no raise or step increases were provided. And on an average, most years, we do our best to provide about a two-point-five percent raise. It's usually one step for that employee on the salary scale and the one percent on top of that for an average of two-point-five percent. So as I shared with you at the February retreat, we were at the time hopeful in trying to figure out a way that we might be able to do something for our employees this spring as a way to show them appreciation and the value that they bring to our division and to help us kind of soften the potential five percent raise that was being projected by the state and promoted by the state. And we were able to do that this late March, and we were able to put in an average two-point-five percent salary increase for the remainder of the current school year. So we're talking about a quarter of their salary for the year is reflected with this two-point-five percent increase, as well as able to bu- budget in a one-time five-hundred-dollar bonus for our employees, which was extremely well-received, as you might imagine, having gone the year without any increases along the way. So our proposed FY twenty-two budget that we approved in February with the board does include an average two-point-five percent overall, which is that one percent plus a step that we would typically put in for the coming year for all school employees. And that does align with what the state's recommendation was for supporting a five percent raise for all SOQ employees during the biennium. So from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-two. So with the average two-point-five percent raise that we put into place on April first and the additional average two-point-five percent raise that is approved in our FY twenty-two budget, this puts us at that five percent, which allows us to take advantage of the full state compensation supplement, which for us is about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. That is what the state is allowing. As a reminder, those SOQ positions that the state provides that compensation supplement for are just our teachers, our counselors, and our librarians. That does not include all of the other folks who help to run our school system and make our school system successful. We have traditionally, as a school division, tried to provide the same raise percentage for all employees, regardless of whether they were in SOQ identified position or not. And so in order to do that, we are trying to make sure that all of our employees receive that average five percent raise. The hundred and twenty-eight thousand doesn't cover all of that SOQ raise for our employees or for the other employees, hence the need to, to increase our request for funding.
And Rebecca, does that equate to fifty percent of the, the state is contributing half of the increase just for the SOQ positions?
So the SOQ positions, Tommy did some great numbers for me. A five percent raise for just SOQ positions would cost us two hundred twenty-six thousand, five hundred fifty-nine dollars. When we add in the five percent for our non-SOQ positions, that comes to a total for the five percent of two seventy-one, one oh nine. So when we did this partial raise April first, that kind of allows us to absorb, absorb about forty-two thousand of that by doing that partial raise now with the funds that we currently have in place. And we were able to do that, but with expense savings that we have, have done, have had this year from different categories where we did not expand everything that we had in those lines, which kind of leaves us with about two hundred twenty-eight thousand to figure out there. And then we get this one-twenty-eight from the state, so that remaining balance that we're including in that FY twenty-two budget amounts to about a hundred thousand dollars. So that does not include the minimum wage adjustments that I'm going to talk about here in a little bit and how that impacts some of our employees or, or the added paraproposition that you're going to see on the next slide. And so, like I said, we've kind of absorbed about forty-two thousand of that total amount by doing this April raise now. And then we're being able to try to make up the difference of that with that one-twenty-eight and the additional request. So the other two priority areas that we have, we are in need of adding, I've, I've shared this with you all, I believe, in the fall and I know in February, an additional special education paraprofessional at Waddell. That position is necessary to support some very specialized needs in the primary grades. We are seeing an increase in special education service needs in our preschool population. And we're, we're required to serve those students, whether they are at Waddell or whether they're out in a private preschool or in our Head Start program or at home. And so we are needing some paraprofessional support for our preschool population, as well as some of our kindergarten and first-grade age students. We have a couple of students coming into kindergarten this coming year with some significant special needs, and this paraprofessional will help to support that with an associated cost of about fifteen thousand. And then, as you all are aware, with minimum wage increases to nine fifty an hour on May first and eleven dollars an hour on January first, and looking ahead to that twelve dollars an hour in twenty-twenty-three, this impacts only our food services employees, and we have placed them on a new modified pay scale that reflects that nine fifty starting minimum wage as of May and an eleven dollar starting minimum wage as of next January. And so the associated cost to that is sixteen thousand, two fifty-five. Wanted to talk a little bit this evening about the Rockbridge County High School Capital Improvements projects. I know I shared with you all in February the grid that you will see on the next page, which outlines the projects that are in the approved capital improvements plan through FY twenty-six. And they have just recently approved a modified plan as of February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one, which added a projected large-scale project to update the Floyd S.K. vocational building. If those of you have, have been on a tour of the vocational building or had children at Rockbridge County High School, it hasn't changed much, with the exception of the restrooms. It's about the same orange and avocado green color, you know, that you might expect from a building that, that's quite old. And the CTE program at Rockbridge County High School is a gem. It is an absolute wonderful program that serves many, many children in our community, and, and they are in desperate need of some updates to that building to bring it into the current times. We, this was not identified in their original capital improvements plan that I had for you back in February. They made those adjustments to add that project from their, the, the study that they did recently, the facility study that was completed for the county schools. This rose to the top of their needs and was added to the FY twenty-three plans. Next year for FY twenty-two, the only project that has been identified that affects our contribution is the repair of stadium concrete, and I have the price there for you. And that would be something we would look at the reserve budget line for future high school capital needs. But I did want to highlight for you all that new revised plan that includes that Floyd S.K. vocational building. We, I plugged in here our current percent, which is seventeen-point-one percent. We anticipate our percentage to hopefully drop because their enrollment has dropped during the year as well, and I'm assuming their March thirty ADM number will be smaller. We know that we typically run about a hundred and sixty-seven, hundred and sixty-eight students out at the high school. As I mentioned on the first page, we're at about a hundred and fifty-four, and they've dropped in overall enrollment as well. So I'm hoping that that percentage is going to come down a bit, which will help to benefit our tuition payments over the, over the next year. But this does nonetheless show you at the current contribution percentage what that amount would come to. I know from the work that they completed on the roofing at the Floyd S.K. building, that was done with bond payments, and we pay that percentage of that yearly bond payment that stretched out over a number of years. I'm making the assumption that that would have to be done as well. I'm not thinking that they probably have four-point-six million dollars laying around for a one-time payment on a project. But as they make any progress towards decisions on that, I will certainly keep you all informed as soon as I, I hear anything from them.
Rebecca, on that topic, can you shed a little insight on the relationship or the process? I mean, is Rockbridge County leadership inviting you to come and, and listen and participate in the discussions so that you have a good handle? Or do they just send you an email saying, hey, seventeen-point-one percent is seven hundred ninety-five thousand?
So we were all invited to the meeting where they did the facility studies report. All of our School Board was invited to that meeting, and we participated in that meeting where we heard of all the different projects that could potentially be coming down the road that were the recommendations from the company that completed that study. At the time, like I said, they had approved these other projects. I'm going to go ahead and slip to the next page because you can see some of the projects that were included in that CIP. Philip and I have some great communication. We talk almost weekly. And so when I got a glimpse that this project may be added in, I called him and I said, Philip, give me some information. That's a big number. And we talked about that, and he and I, he, he shared with me that that was one that was not in the original plan, but as they went back and they really tried to look at prioritizing those facility studies recommendations, that Floyd S.K. building renovation was something that they felt like they needed to, to include as part of this, this bigger plan. Usually what happens is, you know, we receive after the March thirty ADM. And so for us from Rockbridge County, we usually get that toward the end of the school year. Philip sends me an overall number from their reporting that says, here's our total calculation, and here are the number of students. And they've done a great job this year of keeping me abreast of those number changes as we've gone through the year. I've known pretty much monthly if our numbers are fluctuating for enrollment with Lexington City. But that calculation is made based on that March thirty ADM, which we'll probably get sometime in May. We, we know that once we get that, they'll, we get an idea of what our monthly tuition packet looks like from them. We also get usually a summer bill that reflects any textbook or technology needs, which is separately provided our contribution as well. But then with these projects, it's something that we'll, we'll stay in touch because those numbers do change. For instance, the two projects that were completed this last year, one project came in a little higher because it had been projected two years ago what the cost was, and as you all know, everything's increasing in cost right now. So that project came in a little higher. I think the track project was the one that came in lower than anticipated. So they keep me, keep in touch with me about those numbers and what they are projecting those figures to be. But we certainly do try to keep in touch as, as frequently as we can.
But just cut to the detail, you don't have a seat at the table. You just get advised on what's going on, which is their prerogative.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Yes. So anyway, you, you all have seen this. I showed you this in February. The only change that you'll note is in that FY twenty-three, that increase in the identified projects at the high school, and I've added the Floyd S.K. building renovation there at the bottom. And I will certainly remain in touch with them as they're having conversations about the, the, the moving forward with that, that larger project coming up. I did want to highlight a couple of capital improvements that have recently been completed at our schools as part of our FY twenty-one budget. So these are projects that we may have typically wanted to dip into our reserve funds for future needs for, for Lexington City Schools, but because of some budget savings that we have incurred this year, we were able to, to pay for these within our current budget. One is the installation of the fire safety doors at Lilburn Downing. I spoke with you all about this last time. When that building, if you're familiar- When that building, if you're familiar with the ramp that goes up the middle of the hallway, there's a door frame in the middle that did not have fire safety doors installed for some reason when the renovations were done. Our fire marshal has been very kind and very patient with us over the years to say, I really would like you to have this project done. It's not essential, but I really would like this to be finished. And so we were actually able to have that finished over spring break. So they are installed and we're just waiting on the electromagnetic pieces to be added. The other piece is that our security camera system at Waddell Elementary School stopped working a couple of months ago. It pretty much just fizzled out. My understanding was it wasn't the best of systems that was installed with the new construction. We had some folks come and look at it and make some recommendations. We got a couple of several different quotes and come in and look at this. And Jason White partnered with a cold call, I guess. He got a cold call one day at the office and ended up talking with them about security cameras. And we ended up getting a fantastic deal to update our security cameras to a digital system where we actually can see what's happening in the footage, which is really great. We added some additional cameras there on site. And we were able to add several additional cameras in blind spots at Lilburn Downing, which was extremely helpful. Those folks came in and completed that work over spring break as well. I took a look at those today and they are exceptional in terms of giving us a much better view and a much better vision of what's happening in different aspects of the school.
Rebecca, also just for clarification, better quality or does it have greater reach? And did you pick up and looking at places that you weren't looking at before?
Yes, both, both. The quality before was pretty terrible, particularly on the outside cameras. They were extremely fuzzy, very cloudy. You really could not see what was going on. And then we had multiple areas at Waddell, like the main entrance foyer. The hallway in the main entrance did not have a camera. The door right outside the front entrance underneath the awning did not have a camera. So we were able to add some additional spots that we had not seen before. I invite you, when you come over sometime, to take a look at how they look now because they are wonderful. You really can see there's much better view and much better quality of what we're looking at. The same thing with Lilburn Downing. We had a couple of spots that Mr. Kisi had identified as areas where there just weren't cameras there. And sometimes you need a camera to be able to look at something that has happened or something that we're trying to monitor. And so we were able to update four cameras, I believe, over there at Lilburn Downing. And then those folks did a fantastic job with that installation. And we are very, very pleased with the results of that project, so.
Rebecca, are you able to share if those cameras, if those feeds stream at the police department or the fire department? Are they?
That's a great question. I would have to ask Mr. White. I know that right now they go to our principal's office and they go directly to Jason White's office here at the central office. So we are able to see them there. But let me follow up with Jason and ask him if they are connected outside of our system. And I can get back with you.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Rebecca, also, do the cameras pick up? Let's say, from a historic standpoint, Downing, the basketball court and obviously the basketball court and playground can be areas of concern. Are those covered at this point or do you know?
I am not sure. I know that at Lilburn, we did not have one that pointed in that direction of the basketball court. And we do now. So I'm not sure how far it picks up. I can certainly ask Mr. Kisi. And then I would have to ask about the playground as well. I'm not sure if there's one specifically that points in that direction. I know the one, I looked at the one at the gym yesterday that was great. And like I said, those areas where we didn't have cameras, I was able to take a look at those yesterday. But I'm happy to ask if that goes toward the playground as well. And I can let you know the answer to that.
That's great. Thank you. I want to keep an eye on the playground and the garden as well. Make sure there aren't any tater stealers out there.
I tell you, that's right. Frog giggers out there too. We got lots of fun people playing in the pond. So I did want to highlight some of the other incredible grant funding that we've had available to us this year. This next slide is the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations, which is CRRSA Act, Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief, SER-2. So if you look at CRRSA, SER-2 Fund allocations for Lexington City, we received an amount earlier this spring of 196,488,91. These amounts or this grant funding is very specifically supposed to be used for projects or for purchases that are directly related to COVID. So we have to make sure that whatever we are spending is directly related to COVID and its impact on our school system. We have to keep very good records of what we're spending and how we're using this money because everything has to be documented in order to receive the reimbursements as such. So I did want to highlight some of the things that we are in the process of securing or planning to secure as a result of this funding. One of the biggest things that we are really thrilled about is the expansion of our summer school and curriculum planning opportunities for teachers and students. We have traditionally had a fairly small summer school program at Waddell that served rising second through fifth grade. This year, we are expanding our summer school from K to eight. And that's something we have been talking about doing in the past. But the funding allowed us to be able to do this. One of the big pushes that the state and our state superintendent has encouraged us to focus on with this particular act is again, learning loss and addressing any learning loss opportunities that we can help our students make gains for anything that they did not gain this year in some areas where we want to see some academic improvements. So we are expanding our summer school program to include K through eight this year. And we're really excited about that. Our teachers and principals are planning this program to make sure that it is a fun and engaging program. It's not come to school and just do reading and math for three hours a day. But they are creating kind of a camp theme with different themes and field trips and opportunities that will engage them in some authentic learning opportunities to support reading and writing and math during the summer. We also are able to pay our teachers to come in and do some curriculum planning and some pacing development this year, which is really exciting. We have new standards coming from history, as you all know. And this summer, we're going to be partnering with Rockbridge County Public Schools for our teachers to come together and to look at planning for history and look at pacing and developing resources and assessments to support our students in the area of history. We have our math and English teachers at the middle school who come in each summer. And they develop individual intervention plans for students in the areas of math. We've been doing that a few years. But this year, we're adding reading because that's an area of focus as well at the middle school. We're also doing some technology planning now that we have our ITRT. Our media specialists and our ITRT are coming together and looking at technology instruction for K through eight and putting together some pacing work in that way as well. So we're really excited to be able to use some of these funds to help support that curriculum planning in summer school. One of the recommendations in the reports that came out was about music rooms with COVID and the fact that music rooms are places where there are many more droplets than other classrooms. And both of our music rooms at Waddell and at Lilburn Downing support band programs. And if you think about music instruments and you think about singing and all the things that we do in music, there are many more droplets that affect air quality in those programs. And our music room at Lilburn Downing has carpets, which is also not a great thing for droplets and collecting for air quality. So one of the things we were able to do this spring is to purchase large air purifier systems for both of those classrooms. They are commercial air purifiers. And we purchased the filters to last us for about three years, which we felt like was a really good use of the funds for this particular grant. We are also moving forward with bipolar ionization for Lilburn Downing Middle School. This has been a little bit of a process for us because as we were going through the process of making a determination about doing bipolar ionization for our schools, we found out that Waddell Elementary School already has bipolar ionization that was never turned on at the beginning of the school project. So as we brought those folks in, they said, you already have this in place at Waddell. They just need to be turned on. And we had to do a little bit of tweaking in terms of an outlet or two up on the roof. We had to wait for snow and ice to disappear. But we actually have that system up and running at Waddell Elementary, which was very exciting. But we are getting ready to install this at Lilburn Downing. In fact, when the original renovations were done at Lilburn Downing, they put the bipolar ionization on at Lilburn Downing, on the systems there at the middle school. But at the time, the bipolar ionization systems, when they did that, they weren't as good as they are now. They've been improved quite a bit. So they actually took them off at Lilburn Downing. And when we had the new ones on at the new Waddell building. So we are going to be putting those on at Lilburn Downing. That'll be a summer project. One of the things that we've really learned through this school year is with all of the increase in technology and all the Chromebooks and all the computer programs that we are using to support virtual learning, but also learning in our classroom, our wireless systems cannot keep up. But while we have really great buildings, the wireless capacity in those buildings was just not strong enough to support the need of technology. So we are doing some wireless updates division-wide. We did, we are paying for a virtual teacher salary during the fourth quarter at Waddell to support fifth-grade virtual learners. We needed to bring in a substitute who is there to support the virtual learners while those three classrooms are in person and to provide some reading instruction at that level. So that's paying for a substitute salary during the fourth quarter. We are in need of a new floor cleaning machine so that both of our buildings have good floor cleaning machines to be able to use to keep those buildings as clean as possible. We're excited that we're installing a concrete pathway to the Roots and Shoots Garden. This has been a wish from the Roots and Shoots folks for a while. And we've had it on our list, but it keeps getting bumped with other things that come prioritized in front of that. But as our garden is being used as an outdoor learning space quite frequently and also as a lunch space while we're trying to figure out how to lunch with students as they have their masks off and have to be six feet apart, we're having to be creative with some of our lunch locations. We're thinking this coming year, but we're definitely using this as an outdoor learning area. So we are going to install a concrete pathway so that that is much more accessible to our visitors, our volunteers and our students and staff. We've had on our plan for a couple of years, I know you all have heard me mention that we really are in need of some additional custodial support for Waddell. I know this year, we were hoping to partner with the city with a shared custodial position that we would be able to have for several hours a day. And I believe that's not been included in the final city budget. So we felt this might be an opportunity for us to do a two-year position or potentially a three-year position as a part-time custodian to add to Waddell. And that certainly meets the criteria to be able to use these funds to support the finances for that. So that position would be hired with the understanding that this is a two- or three-year position that down the road, if our finances are such that we can continue with that position, we would. But it may be just a short-term position that will help us through this pandemic time. And the same thing with the reading support. This is COVID-related definitely, but it also is a bit of a time coming, seeing how our population at Waddell is changing and the needs of so many of our students are changing with regards to their need for reading support and writing support. We really are thinking that we need to add some staffing there for reading. And we think that this may be a way that we can add some additional hours to a part-time person that's already in place or potentially hire a part-time reading support person at Waddell again for a two- or three-year position until we can figure out if there is a way to build that into our budget moving forward. And then we also got the information this spring about the American Rescue Plan Act, which is SER-3, a fund allocation for Lexington City schools in the amount of 441,000. This again must support COVID-related needs and expenses. And this one stretches out to FY24. In fact, some of the meetings that I've been on said they may actually extend it through FY25. So we are looking at these funds over a period of time and developing a spending plan that will have us spending a portion of this coming year and then saving some of those funds as we go so that as we identify any other needs as we go through the next couple of years COVID-related, that we will have some funds available to us. 20% of these funds or about 88,000 must be reserved to address learning loss. So that is a non-negotiable for us. We have to have 20% of those funds addressing learning loss needs. So right now, these are the identified areas. We have not spent this money because we're still waiting for guidelines. We're still waiting for the very specifics on how we can spend these funds. But some of the pieces that we have identified currently are those Virtual Virginia tuition fees that we will need to pay for any virtual students in the next school year. Those amounts, just so you know, for an elementary student for the year to be a virtual student with Virtual Virginia is about $3,600 per student. And for a middle school student, it's about $2,400 per student. So depending on how many students we have, we would want to reserve much of this funds to help support those tuition fees. We will continue with hopefully some expanded summer school and again, curriculum planning into summer '22 because we know that this is not just a one-year thing, that we're going to be looking at learning loss and recovering for some of our students. So we will hopefully be able to plan our summer school program and curriculum planning for '22. We'll be able to replace some of our technology that we have purchased this year to support virtual and classroom learning. We're updating some bathroom soap and towel dispensers. Another capital project that we've had on our list for a while that we were probably going to look for allocation for reserve funds is glassing in the media lab at Waddell. If you're familiar with the library, there's a small computer lab in the corner that was not walled in or glazed in during the original construction. And it makes that space somewhat unusable because for a group to be in the library and then a group to actually use that space, the noise is not great. And the teachers always think they're in each other's way a little bit. And we really do need that space, particularly with social distancing. We have some really tiny little instructional spaces at Waddell that are not working for us right now because you really can put one student and one teacher in that space. And we need to have small groups. So we are hoping to glass in that media lab there at Waddell's and add a door so that that can actually be used as a little bit larger classroom space. And we can use some of those spaces a little more effectively. And then this is where we've talked about potentially adding a year to that part-time custodian and reading position based on where we are with our budget and our needs. That comes up nowhere near 441,000. As I mentioned, these are estimated projects. We have some numbers kind of off to the side here. And like I mentioned, we want to look at spending maybe 40% to 50% of that money in the first year and then budgeting those funds out over the next couple of years so that as needs are identified, that we have some funds available to us. I did want to mention, you know, each year when we start working on the budget, I talk with our central office staff, I speak with our administrators, and we talk about what are some needs within our budget? What are some things that we need to consider? And not everything can make it into a budget. So I did want to include some pieces that we want to continue to look at as we are looking down the road for Lexington City schools. One is the idea of considering increasing health insurance contribution percentages for our employees when they are on an employee plus one or a family plan. The school division does a great job for individuals who are just themselves on their insurance plan. We pay almost everything on their insurance plan. But once they add a plus one, whether it's a child or a spouse or whether they add a family, those plans are pretty pricey. And we get feedback from some of our employees that it's very difficult on them to be able to pay what they need to pay on that family plan. So Tommy and I are hoping to work with the city to look at some of the contributions that they have for their employees and how our programs work or align to support our areas. Another area that we've been talking about, last year, we increased our substitute teacher daily rate from $65 a day to $75 a day so that we were more closely aligned with Rockbridge County. Once we did that, they bumped theirs another $10. So they still pay a little more than we do. And we really want to try to get up there closer to where they are because we have some wonderful substitutes for us that sometimes we'll say, well, I can make more if I go to Rockbridge. And we really need them with us. So we want to look at how we can maybe bump that substitute, pay another $10 to continue to attract candidates. We have built our pool a little bit better this year. We have some great folks who are really dedicated to our schools. And this is where they want to be. So I'd like to be able to compensate them a little more competitively. Again, I mentioned already adding some additional reading support at the elementary level. And as always, we are really looking to continue to modify our salary scales to increase that base rate pay for teachers and administrators to better compete with other school districts. What we have found in our research, and Tommy and I have done a lot of work on looking at salaries regionally, we are in pretty good shape when it comes to paraprofessionals, school secretaries, custodians, food services. Some of those folks, we're very competitive. In fact, we're a little bit better than most school districts in terms of how we pay those folks, where we find that we still are not quite where we need to be or with our administrators, our principals. And then we want to continue to bump that bottom base rate for our teachers. I think we're going to be starting at about 40,000 this coming year. But we'd love to get that base rate up a little bit. We pay really well as you go up the scale. We offer a great master supplement. But I'd like to be able to get that base rate pay for both of those positions up at a little bit more competitive of a level. So some overall budget details. This proposed budget that we have approved as a school district includes a 2% increase to the tuition line at Rockbridge County High School. We don't know what that enrollment is going to end up looking like. And we know that they are going to probably have an enrollment increase on their end. Got to see what our numbers look like. We're not exactly sure how they are going to end up on their health insurance costs and their technology expenses. So we always like to build in a little bit more in that line just so we're prepared and covered on that end. Our budget includes an increase in the Special Education Purchase Services line. This line supports special transportation for students that do go out to River This line supports special transportation for students that do go out to Rivermont, as well as testing costs for any students with disabilities. So we are paying for, whether it's psychological testing or sociocultural testing or PT or OT services within our division, and that line almost always goes over or gets pretty close. So we've increased that over the past couple of years to make sure that we are covered well for those services for students. We're really, really pleased that we have a 4% decrease in health insurance costs, and that doesn't happen too often. So our budget does reflect the decrease in those insurance costs overall, and we're pleased to be able to pass that along to our employees. And I did want to just mention that, you know, this budget includes primarily flat or reduced budget lines for areas like materials and supplies, purchase services, professional services, operations, and travel. What I mean by that is last February, when we approved our first budget and then had to make cuts last May, we cut many, many of our lines down quite a bit. And as we developed this year's budget, we didn't bring those lines back up to where they were last February. We kept them on the lower end, which means some of these lines for material supplies, professional services, et cetera, are on that lower end of the budget. We've kept those there. Our administrators and directors have done a great job with spending this year and really watching what they are spending and really being responsible with the funds that are available to us. So our total budget sits at $7,816,061. This represents a 3.7% overall increase from FY21. Again, as a reminder, it's built on a projected ADM of 620 students in K through 12. Our expected increase in state revenues for FY22, we are set to receive about $286,664 in additional state funding for FY22 when compared to FY21, and this includes that compensation supplement of $128,000 to support the salary increase. It includes that no-loss funding, and it includes some increased sales tax revenues. So the local contribution that we are coming to you all with is $3,216,594. It is a requested increase of $156,047 or 5.1% difference from the FY21 budget. And that is what I have for you this evening, and I'm happy to try to answer any questions that you have. I have Tommy here as well.
Thank you.
Some blinds for the windows. That's going to be on our list for FY23.
Council changed the meeting time, so we're meeting a little earlier.
Okay.
Just kidding. Members of council, have any questions?
I have a couple really that we can do quick, maybe.
Okay.
Do you want them all at the same time?
One at a time is good, one at a time.
Can you help explain on slide four what it means that for FY22, the state is supporting no-loss funding at 656 students, but we're building our budget off of 620? Am I missing something? The state funding will be based on 656 students, is that right?
This year's budget, the FY21 budget, when they looked at our numbers in September, we were sitting at about 605. And instead of only providing the funding for 605 through this year, they went ahead and provided the funding at the 656, which is what we had in March, so that we didn't have to look at figuring out how we were going to come up with a difference during the current school year. So that is for FY21. FY22, we base our budget on how many students we think we are going to have next year because next March, they're going to be looking at the March 30 ADM as we're looking to move forward on that.
Okay, I was misunderstood because slide four said that there was no-loss funding approved for FY22, I thought. That's where I'm confused. So
There is
If kids stay, the state is screwing over K through 12 education and FY22 with no-loss funding is not approved.
I think there will be some no-loss funding approved for FY22. We don't know exactly what that's going to look like. We know for this year, it looks like relying on the March 2020 ADM. I'm not sure what that's going to look like next year, but I'm going to ask Tommy if I'm missing anything on that piece.
Actually, no, I think that's right. We did build in some no-loss funding for FY22.
But we don't have the, we don't know exactly where that's going to end up.
So if they do no-loss funding for FY22 at 656 students, in theory, the additional 5% from the city would not be needed because the state would be making up the difference between 620 ADM and 656, in theory.
I think we would need it to be built in, and I got to double-check my numbers. We built in another line for no-loss funding. There was a calculation. There was a number in there. We'll look that up this year in a second.
Okay. I was just trying to understand because when, just that the budget is built off of 620, that makes me assume that there is no-loss fund. I mean, that they're not providing any additional fund. Another quick question. Are we implementing to reinstate athletics and after-school activities and therefore teachers would be getting stipends and everything next year?
Yes.
Okay. What's the status of the website that we had approved funding for that? I don't know if that was the city taking the lead on that or the schools, to be quite honest, but I know
We are super excited about that, and in fact, that's a surprise for my school board because I haven't even told them. So surprise. We've been wanting a new website for many, many years. That's been something that we've been pushing for and hoping for and doing some research on, and we are very grateful to be able to partner with the city on developing a new website. What's beautiful about what we are going with is the city and the schools are able to have voice on their websites separately. So we've been working very closely with Janie and Nathan Straub on the city side, and on our side, myself, Jason White, Scott Limmer, and Nathan Straub have been working on the school side. We are plugging right along. We have weekly meetings with the website developers. We have sent them. We've worked on the design. We have worked on the content. We've been approving what everything looks like. For us as a school division, we want a site that is functional and user-friendly because our current website is not, and I think what you're going to see coming, and we really are keeping our fingers crossed, it might be ready to roll for the beginning of the school year, is going to be fantastic. So we have really been working hard on that project, and we're really hopeful that we will have it prepared. We've given them a hope date of 1st of August, so we're hopeful that maybe it'll be up and running by then. But Janie and Nathan have been working more on the city side on that with Jim's permission. Janie is the website guru there at the city, and so she's been developing the pieces for the city, and we've been working on the end for our schools.
And I got one more, and this is kind of just to bring up the school board up to speed on what we talked about. We had a two-hour work session on Tuesday, and we talked about the significant cost of the Floyd SK building. And one of the things we brought up was in June 2017, is I believe when it occurred, we had a presentation from the county school board, and at that time, they were spending millions and millions of dollars on some energy reduction strategies and took on some large, you know, plans to spend millions of dollars that would in theory pay for themselves over the course of 10 to 20 years in energy savings. But one of the points made at that time was, as soon as you changed anything and did any remodeling to whether it be the high school or the Floyd SK building, that those performance metrics would change and the savings would maybe not be there, and therefore, the millions of dollars that was being invested to ultimately save you money over the course of 20 years would potentially, the savings wouldn't calculate the same way. So kind of just point that out to the school board. It was something that we were sold on, or we weren't because we don't have a choice, but we were told about in 2017, and here we are in 2021, and just not sure how that will impact the cost savings that we were hoping to all realize over there. So just wanted to share that with you all because I don't think any of the school board members were on the board in 2017. Maybe Tim was, sorry.
I'm pausing because I don't know about that. That was something I would have to get more information on. I'm not sure if any of our board members remember that or not.
Yeah, I do have a vague recollection. Owen would have been on at that point as well. And you certainly raise a good point. As you highlighted at the end, the real challenge is that, and we talked about earlier, is we don't actually have a seat at the table.
Molly was on there too, right? Sorry, Molly. But anyway, I just bring that up. Nothing we can do about it, but something to stay aware of, I guess.
On the contrary, we don't have a seat at the table, but we do have a voice when we attend. One of the questions I had for you is, is ad-hoc still in existence, and if so, who is representing the city, and when do you all meet?
Mr. Viet, do you want to take that one?
Sure. So with, you know, the latest challenges, it is still in existence. You know, traditionally, it's the chair and vice chair, so myself and Tammy Dunn. I would be the representative this year. You know, frankly, due to all the challenges this year, we have not had our regularly scheduled meeting. This will be a good opportunity to add a few agenda items for our next meeting and then, you know, can report back to you all either in this sort of formal atmosphere or in a less formal way what their responses are, both to David's question and a few of the other things that have come up tonight.
I would add, Mr. Freeman, that one of our school board members, and usually myself, attend the monthly school board meetings up the county and are able to bring reports back and share any information that's shared at those meetings each month.
Whomever has the dubious honor, I would encourage you to carry David's question to them to make sure it's on their radar. It's an expensive topic, to be sure.
Yes.
I'd like to follow up with the point that David Ziegler just made about the addition of solar at, for the high school and for the county. What about the possibility of solar in Lexington for the Waddell School? My understanding that it exists at Lurin Downing, could it also exist, or have we looked at it for Waddell?
That's a great question, Mr. Ali Good, and we actually have looked into that. I can get you some more information on that from Mr. White, but we're not really realizing much of a savings at all from the solar project at Lurin Downing, is my understanding. And we did talk with the folks, the solar project folks about a Waddell project, but looking at the expenses incurred and the outcome coming out from that, we at the time, this was last year, did not see that as something we were interested in pursuing currently.
Thank you. The lack of performance, because of the lack of performance of the solar system at Lurin Downing not working out, you know, sometimes the payback on those systems is being advertised as being short. Are you seeing it like past 10 years? Like as long as 10 years or more for getting your money back for the investment?
I would have to look at that information and get Mr. White to look in on that for you. Mr. White, our director of operations, he has managed most of that information, done the meetings with those folks, but I'd be happy to get him in touch with you or have him provide you with some information.
Super. That'd be appreciated. And, you know, maybe solar, the cost of the system just doesn't make it viable, and it'd be interesting to know, just to know, so he can make a good decision.
Absolutely. I know that when we looked into that last year, we were really surprised that it did not seem to do what we anticipated that it was going to do in terms of savings to the point where we did not feel like that, looking at it for Waddell was something that we really were excited about doing based on what we were seeing. But I will be glad to have him follow up with you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
As I recall, we didn't pay anything for Secure Futures to put that on the roof of lip, but they did advertise an annual savings of, I think, $3,600
That's right.
Utility bill. So.
Yeah, Rebecca, if you could pass your findings on to the city manager that he could distribute to council would be great.
Absolutely.
Members of council, other questions?
I have just a couple. On the virtual learning that's going to be offered in the fall, is that state mandated or is that an option that Lexington City Schools is offering? If you said that, I missed it, and I apologize.
No, no, it's not. That is a great question. So the way that the bill reads is that schools, it started off initially as that we must provide a virtual option, and then it changed to saying school divisions may provide a virtual option. In my regional meetings and state meetings, what I am, in our conversations as superintendent, most all school divisions are planning to offer some type of virtual option so that they do not lose enrollment and can hopefully regain some of the enrollment from folks maybe who left because of their concerns about COVID.
It started at 7 to 7, it was the official agenda.
We talked about potentially not doing a virtual option, but as we looked at what Virtual Virginia could do as far as just for this one year, because that bill extends through FY20 or through '22, so we would not have to do it beyond 2022, we decided to go ahead and put in a virtual option using the Virtual Virginia model in case we do have some families who want to continue with that just for this one year.
Okay.
And Chuck, Rebecca may have mentioned this, but right, and the other key part is it's being paid for, right, with those, is that supplemental funding we're receiving, right? So we're not taking it out of our typical budget dollars.
Right.
Okay, that, I'll move along. And the kindergarten enrollment that we've had so far is out-of-district participation roughly equal to what it's been in the past?
It is, and I don't have the actual kindergarten numbers, but they weren't astronomical in terms of non-residents versus residents. I mean, I think it was looking more like, I don't know if it was a third or somewhere in that range, but I can get the specifics between residents and non-residents, but we did register 43 on kindergarten registration day.
Okay. Last thing I had was upping subpay. I'd support that 100%, only because I think it's important to get
It is.
To be competitive with Rockbridge County Public Schools.
I agree.
The
We may look at that. We were able to, we really did have some great savings with substitutes this year, and Tommy and I have not run the final numbers on what that would look like if we were able to up that even part of the week, even $5 this year and then try to do the rest next year. We'll probably continue to look at those numbers as we go, but we know that that's definitely something that we're interested in as well.
The last thing I had was, I know insurance for teachers, especially if you're participating in a, adding a child or a family to your policy is almost cost prohibitive. It almost makes the job not viable. I learned that when I went through HR, I don't know, five or six years ago, and when I saw those numbers jump up, it just startled me. I had no idea. And it can't be just a regional problem. It's got to be statewide to have that sort of load put on our teachers. Has the state DOE taken any position on how to alleviate some of that other than, you know, you're on your own, good luck, it's been working fine, and we're just not going to address it, or is it becoming a greater priority in Richmond to help that situation improve?
I have not heard very much on the state level on that problem. I do know that, you know, some districts look at, you know, some of their insurance plans where, you know, if you are, if your spouse is able to get insurance through another company, then you have to do that on their own. They can't get on your insurance to try to support that. But I have not heard anything from the state level. It's something I could certainly bring up at one of our regional superintendent's meetings just to hear if others are having similar conversations or hearing anything from the state level. We have a representative on VDOE for our SLC, and I would be glad to have her reach out and see if there's anything being discussed at a higher level. I know it's just something that we hear annually, not terribly, and I don't want anyone to feel like we have people complaining, but we have several people who pretty much each year say, can we look at helping out, you know, employee plus one and families to make that a little bit more affordable for folks? And I think that's something that Tommy and I really are interested in looking at. I know Jim mentioned the other day that he and Jake were interested in joining in that conversation as well for the city.
I'd love to hear what you find out. Appreciate that.
Glad to.
Chuck, I would share with you bad news that it's not limited to just the education community. It's, there are several businesses that don't offer health insurance at all, and then even in the private sector, once you get beyond the employee, it jumps dramatically. So it's a widespread issue, not a limited issue. The members of council have questions?
One more, please. The free school breakfasts and lunches that is, they've been offered during this academic year, can you just say how those have been utilized and if that program is being continued? can you just say how those have been utilized and if that program is being continued to next year?
I can. I have, we have some of those numbers for you, just in case. First, it has been a very, very well-received program this year. Mr. White and I are really hoping that we get a last-minute decision that that is going to extend into next school year. We have not gotten that word yet. What we've received so far is that it can extend into September if we choose, but we basically have to choose between the application process, which would allow families to be eligible throughout the year if they are eligible for free or reduced services, or everybody can have it free through September, but then after that, you're on your own. So we know that we are going to do the application process because that's going to benefit more of our families year long. But just to share some numbers with you, our, first of all, through December 2020, our overall expenses and revenues in the cafeteria, and as you, just to remind you all, our cafeterias are not supposed to make money, and so they are always down. We were down about $43,000, which is basically your walk-in sales, you know, people coming in and buying lunch. That's how you get your funds above that negative balance. We were down about $43,000 compared to previous years. We're only off about $2,000, which is actually pretty, pretty good. What's really, really interesting is this free lunch reimbursement program. In FY '20, this will your '20, our free lunch reimbursement sales. So the reimbursement we receive for children that go through and get a lunch, and they are free lunch sales, it was about $60,000 reimbursement. Currently, through March, our free lunch sales to the division is $81,000. So we're about $20,000 ahead of where we were in FY '20 in terms of the walk-in for free meal services. We're anticipating that these, this last quarter of the year, we're going to get quite a bit above that. We're anticipating over $100,000 probably for that free lunch reimbursement, which is really, really helpful and will help to keep those overall expenses and revenues. We know they're going to be in the negative because they always are, but it's going to keep them more realistic. So we were really pleased with that. Like I said, I, it would not surprise me if we get word at some point in the summer that they are going to continue with the federal program to provide the free meals for everybody through next school year. I would love that. We certainly have seen an increase in the meals that our cafeteria folks are serving, breakfast and lunch. And then again, you can tell just from the numbers here with $81,000, that's a lot more kids coming in and getting meals. So that's been a really wonderful service for our schools. I'm really hoping that they will continue that.
And I would say if you serve mozzarella sticks and French toast sticks every day, my daughter would buy every day. But actually, I know that you all worked on the menu in the last couple of years. And I, as a parent, definitely have noticed that and appreciate the work on the, on the school lunch menu. I think a lot of people wouldn't notice that, but I do, and want to thank you all for that.
Thank you. We've been excited about it, too. It's been a little easier on our staff because we're on a rotating menu, and then we occasionally mix things up, but pretty much on a rotating menu. And so if your daughter's like mine, she eats everything next week. She ate nothing this week, and that's okay, but I can plan for packing that way. And then some of the other pieces that we're hoping to be able to go back in, I don't know. One thing that you probably noticed meeting over there in Waddell are the huge cardboard boxes of the Styrofoam lunch containers that we've had to use this year. You know, in last spring, right before the pandemic, we were set on, we're not using Styrofoam, we're not using plastic, we're going to go green in our cafeterias. And then the pandemic hit and we had to package lunches. And we tried to price what it would be to not use Styrofoam, and we just could not afford that, I'll be honest. So we're hoping we can round out on the Styrofoam this year and maybe not have to do some packaging next year. But it's going to be interesting what lunches look like next year as well because we still have to maintain that six feet distancing when they don't have their masks on. So we may be doing some classroom lunches or some alternative lunch locations next year, but thank you for the compliment. I'll pass that along to Food Services.
And one more, Rebecca, please thank your crossing guards. You know, they do a great job and they are fantastic. And I see them every day doing their job. And that's a thankless job, and they're out there in the rain and in the snow. And just want to say thank you to them.
I'll do that. They are great folks, and we're really glad to have them. We enjoy having them as part of our staff this year.
Rebecca, I want to apologize for not being here for the presentation. I've missed all of it. I'm so sorry, but I had an emergency out here on the property. But I have one follow-up question in regard to the school lunches, and it has to do with those students who are virtual. Are they receiving lunches?
They are. We have a pickup available at the school. We also have RAP, who's been a wonderful partner with us, who has done some lunch delivery for us for some families who were struggling to get to schools, pick up the lunch. So we have been able to do that this year, and we're really pleased we've been able to offer that service.
Is that something that will continue until September as well?
We'll have to look and see what our plan looks like, but I think we probably will. We just need to figure out, you know, what that lunch system is going to look like and also what our virtual numbers will look like. Now, this summer, we are not continuing the free meals program through our program, but we are partnering with Rockbridge County. We did not have enough food services staff, and we're interested in working through the summer again this year to do meal services. But Rockbridge County has been an incredible partner. We partnered with their food services program, and our children can pick up free meals at Mari River Middle School all summer. And we promote that, send that information out to our families so that they know that they can pick it up right here in the city, but just across town a little bit.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Members of council, have any other questions? Rebecca, two final things. One, I know that you've been involved in discussions with Nathan and the city manager on the potential return to in-person, perhaps at Waddell or possibly at Laverne Downing. So thank you for your patience and indulgence and collaboration with that. And also with conversations with the Electoral Board where they may make a change. Shared publicly with some other folks and certainly with the Electoral Board, we understand the importance of elections and the need for safe locations in ease of access. And to me, getting students educated because of a celebration of sorts of an election day in our schools could be something very positive. Where the children have off-school, it can be a very festive environment for people exercising their privilege to vote. So thank you for those, participating in those conversations and the support that you've provided in working through the logistics, which are never easy because there are lots of moving parts and things going on. But greatly appreciate that.
Jim and I had a conversation today, and we are, we are very grateful for the beautiful buildings that we have. And if we can support the community, we want to be able to do that if it's realistic. And I think we did decide, I know the transition for council to meet at Waddell, moving over to Laverne Downing, we're going to, we did request at that beginning of June, mainly because we have SOL testing on Fridays for our virtual learners. It's already been scheduled, which means that cafeteria is set up on Thursdays for testing on Friday. So I asked Jim if we could hold off until the 1st of June to transition over for those meetings. But we are more than glad to welcome you all over on this end of town and happy to support in any way that we can.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Lyons sold council back in the day on the two beautiful facilities with the concept of being community centers and having our meetings and lots of other functions. So they are great and important and valuable hubs in our community. So thank you for being a good steward of them and keeping them in good repair. If there is nothing else to come right now for this joint meeting, I'd invite Chairman Diott to adjourn his meeting.
I'll call, I'll adjourn our, the school board meeting for today. Thank you.
We have 7:12, and we'll adjourn the city council work session jointly with school board. And for council members who have a long time ahead of them and just sat for a little over an hour, I would say that we'll stand adjourned and reconvene in at 7:18. So take six minutes to stretch your legs or whatever is necessary, and we'll start the regular city council meeting at 7:18.
Thank you all. Good luck with your meeting this evening. We're thinking of you all.
Thank you, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Appreciate that.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 7:18, and thank you for those that are just dialing in. We had a work session with the Lexington City School Board, and it ran a little over. So to give council an opportunity to freshen up for our 7 o'clock meeting, we postponed the meeting until 7:18. So I'd like to call the April 15, 2021 Zoom City Council meeting to order. And if you all will please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic. To which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Welcome to all those who are joining us on Facebook Live recording. And for those that are with us on Zoom. For your consideration of the agenda, the city manager has requested a closed session to update on negotiations dealing with real estate. And is there anything else council members want to add or aware of? Hearing none with that modification, we will adopt the agenda and proceed. Next item is proclamations. And please to offer a proclamation declaring May 2021 is Foster Care Awareness Month in Lexington. And I know Natalie wasn't able to be here. I don't know if there's someone from Intercept. If you are, welcome. And I offer the following proclamation. Whereas children are key to our community's future success, prosperity, and quality of life. And whereas the more than 5,400 children in Virginia's foster care system have a right to thrive, learn, and grow in a safe and loving environment. And whereas foster parents provide love, safety, and stability in order to overcome traumatic experiences in order to reach their full potential. And whereas Lexington City foster parents are caring for and nurturing children and youth in foster care today. And whereas we must come together as a community to recognize the important role foster parents play in caring for children who have experienced abuse and neglect, supporting family reunification, and building strong communities. And whereas a need exists to identify more foster parents in order to ensure children, older youth, children with complex needs and siblings have a safe and stable home in their community. And whereas there are numerous individuals, businesses, organizations, associations, religious groups, and public servants who are dedicated to raising awareness about the needs of children and youth in foster care. And whereas Foster Care Awareness Month is celebrated nationally to raise awareness about foster care and to encourage community involvement as foster families, volunteers, and mentors. And be it therefore resolved, the Lexington City Council does hereby declare May 2021 as Foster Care Awareness Month in Lexington City. And we urge all citizens to come forward and take action that will positively impact the life of a child in foster care. Be it further resolved, the Lexington City Council does hereby commend Intercept Health Treatment Foster Care for their efforts to raise awareness surrounding this societal crisis, given under my hand and seal of the City of Lexington this 15th day of April in the year of our Lord 2021. Again, thank, grateful to Natalie who made us aware of this month of May being Foster Care Awareness Month, and encourage you all to do your part that you can through your church and through the community to support our children in foster care. And the next proclamation is recognizing May 2 through 8 as Municipal Clerks Week. As you all know, especially council is aware of the magic that's happening before you with the change in screen and getting us all together virtually. in screen and getting us all together virtually and safely is doesn't happen easily. But Janie does it with style and grace. And because of that, I'd like to offer the 52nd Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, May 2 through 8, 2021. Whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world. And whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest among among public servants. And whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas the Professional Municipal Clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and partiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas the Professional Municipal Clerk serves as the Information Center on Functions of Local Government and Community. And whereas Professional Municipal Clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops and annual meetings of their state, provincial, county and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk. Now therefore, as the Mayor of City of Lexington, I do recognize the week of May 2 through May 8, 2021 as Professional Municipal Clerks Week and further extend appreciation to our Professional Municipal Clerk, Janie Hostetter and to all Professional Municipal Clerks for the vital service they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Adopted as this 15th day of April, 2021. And I encourage you all to extend your appreciation for the good work that Janie does and not just you council, but you our community. We will recognize it May 2 through 8, but I encourage you to stop and visit Janie in our City Hall and express your appreciation for the good work that she does throughout the year in the past and certainly into our future. Next is a resolution that we will consider after reading a resolution declaring July 2021 to be Plastic Pollution Reduction Month. And I've asked Mr. Smith to read that into the record as our committee chair for recycling.
Privileged to read this resolution in recognition of resuming partial recycling in the city. And I'll say a few words after the, after the reading. Whereas single use plastic pollution is one of the primary environmental threats to the well being of people and wildlife everywhere. And whereas reducing the use of plastic is important because plastic production requires an enormous amount of energy and resources, which in turn causes carbon emissions and contributes to global warming. And whereas reducing the use of plastics is important because plastics are discarded into the environment where toxic chemicals linked to cancers, birth defects, impaired immunity and endocrine dysfunction leach into the water supply and food chain harming humans and wildlife. And whereas reducing the use of plastics is important because plastics are discarded into the environment where they can be ingested by wildlife and kill, for example, at least 100,000 marine animals and 1 million seabirds every year according to the United Nations. And whereas reducing the use of plastics is important because plastics are discarded into the environment where they create unsightly pollution that spoils roadways, parks, neighborhoods and other areas inhabited by humans. And whereas dramatically more single use plastics are being generated in the United States than in prior decades. With for instance, the US EPA reporting that 35,680,000 tons of plastics were generated in the United States in 2018 compared to 390,000 tons in 20 in 1960. And whereas dramatically more single use plastics are being landfilled now in the United States than in prior decades. With for instance, the US EPA reporting that 26,970,000 tons of plastics were landfilled in the United States in 2018 as compared to 390,000 tons in 1960. And whereas only a fraction of the plastics produced and discarded in the United States are recycled. With for instance, the US EPA reporting that 8.7% of plastics generated in the United States in 2018 were recycled while 75.6% were landfilled that year. And whereas the City of Lexington's residents, businesses and visitors use and discard many tons of plastic waste each year, which is costly to landfill and to land to landfill and reduces future landfill capacity. And whereas the City of Lexington has concluded that recycling plastics is not currently cost effective. And in any event, many types of plastics used by Lexington residents are either not recyclable or not actually recycled by the user even when recycling is available. And whereas communities worldwide are promoting campaigns to encourage their residents to choose to refuse single use plastics. And whereas Plastic Free July is a global movement aimed at empowering people, businesses and entire communities to shift away from single use plastics in their lives. And whereas July 2021 will be the 10th International Plastic Free July Worldwide. And whereas the Virginia State Government has committed to reducing plastic pollution with the General Assembly establishing a Plastic Waste Prevention Advisory Council in 2020 and the Governor signing Executive Order 77 on March 23, 2021, which mandates that phasing out of single use plastics by Virginia State Government Agencies, including disposable plastic bags, single use plastic and polystyrene food service containers, plastic straws and cutlery and single use plastic water bottles. And whereas numerous local organizations, including the Rockbridge Area Conservation Council, Main Street Lexington, Boxer Wood, 50 Ways Rockbridge, North Rockbridge Women's Club, Rockbridge Area Master Gardeners, Rockbridge Community Health Foundation and the Blue Ridge Garden Club are combining efforts to launch a Choose to Refuse to Use Single Use Plastics Campaign in July 2021, aimed at encouraging the residents and businesses of Rockbridge County and the cities of Lexington and Bena Vista to reduce their consumption of single use plastics. And whereas both the Virginia Military Institute and the Washington Lee University Sustainability Committee support this resolution and the committee's commitment to reducing single use plastic consumption and plastic pollution. Whereas single use plastic consumption can be reduced in a myriad of ways, including avoiding selling and purchasing consumer goods in plastic packaging, buying in bulk and refilling usable containers, declining past plastic straws, using compostable takeout containers and using reusable storage containers, covers on leftovers, shopping bags and water bottles. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Lexington, Virginia, by this resolution formally declares July 2021 as Plastic Pollution Reduction Month. Adoption of this resolution demonstrates support for the Choose to Refuse to Use Single Use Plastics Campaign. Be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Lexington, Virginia encourages the businesses operating within city limits to take all available steps to reduce consumption of single use plastics in order to preserve and improve the environment and well being of all.
Excellent. I'll take that as a motion and welcome a second.
I'll second. Can I second my own motion?
Thank you Leslie for seconding it. With that super reading, you should be allowed to, but Robert does first rules don't allow you to second your own motion. Any discussion? I would just add my compliments to Mr. Smith's reading and also to Mr. Smith's work with the committee and look forward to Thursday, the 22nd, when recycling will begin again in earnest. And encourage everyone, every opportunity you have not to buy bottled water, but to refill your reusable cup to do your part to minimize that reusable or use the reusable, not the single use item. Motion is second or go ahead.
If you use it again, then it's not a single use. I reuse plenty of Gatorade bottles, but in light of that, I did drive by the recycling installation out of Public Works earlier today and it looks like it's ready to go. I don't know if Jeff's with us this evening to share some thoughts, but encouraged at the speed of installation of that, the progress we're making to make that happen and my hats off to 50 Ways Environmental and Rack.
Excellent. Have a motion and a second. I'd ask for a roll called vote. Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler.
Aye.
Ron.
Looking forward to Plastic Free July and I vote aye.
Excellent. Mr. Alligan.
Aye.
Mr. Ayers.
Aye.
Ms. Alexander.
Full heartedly aye.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And we'll get that certified and over to our friends at Rack. Next item on the agenda is presentation. Over the past several years, we've had the good fortune and benefit of work of cadets and professors at VMI. And it warms my heart and soul for a local boy done good and looking good. Cole Cathcart and Dr. Bing being with us this evening to present the popular pop, the popular annual financial report or PAFRA report. And Cole, I'll let you or Dr. Bing, if y'all rock, paper, scissors, take it away.
Well, thank you for that introduction, Mayor Friedman. I think it might get some extra credit if I, if I take this one instead of my professor. So, um, so thank you all for being here, City Council for, for letting us, letting us talk. So for those of you who don't know my name, my name's Cole Cathcart. I was born and raised in Rockbridge County. And I'm a first year cadet at VMI. So my professor, Dr. Bing Jiang, mentioned in class one day something about this popular annual financial report. And she mentioned that it's a great opportunity to help out the City of Lexington and also learn more about how municipal governments work and the finances behind it. And I of course jumped right on that being a townie, if you will, and just wanting to be a part of it. So that's, that's what I got involved in. So I worked on this project with, with two other cadets. Cadets Harris Burton and Simon Cawtham Hammer, who cannot be here tonight. But so it was a great opportunity to not only collaborate with them and learn more, but also learn more about how the city government works, finances and also, you know, make the financial information of the city digestible for, for anyone who wants to read it. So it's been a couple of months worth of work and I wanted to give a quick couple of shout outs to our academic advisor and my professor, Dr. Bing Jiang, who helped us out a lot with this. As well as members of the City Council and city government who, who provided us with information. I know I see Mr. Adams in here. He was very influential in that. So thank you to everyone who helped out. So I will go ahead and jump right in and give you a brief synopsis of what it is. So PAFR, um, so you guys, I know being government and the professional world have heard the COVID cliches over the past few years. These are unprecedented times and yada, yada, yada. You've heard it a million times. I have too. But this, this past year, the fiscal year of 2020 was certainly an extraordinary one for the City of Lexington and the world in general. But so the first main point I like to touch on was financially, the city's response to COVID. The City of Lexington utilized the Federal Cares Act to help local businesses and also make sure that the working of, of the city government ran smoothly. Um, so through the Industrial Development Authority, the City of Lexington, oh, and the Main Street Lexington nonprofit, which is awesome. The City of Lexington was able to direct $385,000 directly into local businesses. So that, reading all this information, that was kind of one of the most outstanding things that I saw in this past year. So if we were in person, I would say round of applause for that because that's huge. But again, can hold your applause over Zoom. Um, so furthermore, in the fiscal year of 2020, it was a year still, even despite COVID issues. It was earmarked with numerous public works and just general improvement projects on Main Street. Pipeline project. I know if, if anyone drove through Main Street over the past year or so earlier in 2020, you know how rough it was. But the city paid to remove faulty and old ductal line pipes and have them replaced, which ensured that well being and safety of the citizens of Lexington. It was also cool because my, my father works in the, in the pipe industry as well. So that was a notable use of city funds. Furthermore, paving around the City of Lexington was also a big use of funds this in fiscal year 2020 as well. As well as a storm drain project to meet the Department of Environmental Quality Standards as well. So that was a lot of city spending fiscal year 2020. Um, so moving on, the city's general fund, so the basic operations of the city is, I'm sure you all are familiar with. So the city's general fund revenue exceeded expenditures, which is always a good thing. And is a prime example of how fiscally responsible the city is and how, how well it is being run at the current time. So the, the current figures between those two revenues were around 18.7 million with expenditures being around 16.5. So it's good to, to be in good shape there. However, there was a, a 2.27% decrease in overall governmental revenue. So things like property taxes, permits, fines, stuff like that. And the, that I think that may in part be due to the COVID pandemic. I can't necessarily give a definitive answer there. But there was a decrease, but there is a flip side to that coin. Although tax revenue, overall city government revenue was down. Spending in fiscal year 2020 compared to 2019 matched the decrease in revenue. So spending was also down around 2%, which is another example of how fiscally responsible the city was and made sure they didn't spend necessarily more than they took in or much more than they took in, which is a very good thing. The last main point I like to touch on is something that so I, I kind of took over and worked on this project with my partners and in doing that, I had to review a lot of these past projects, past PAFRs. And something that continually impressed me every year was the, the city's handling of its debt a year after year and fiscal year 2020 was no exception. So the city's total, total general debt obligation decreased by around 1.5 million or 5% of what their debt obligation was from fiscal year 19 to fiscal year 20. Um, so the current, or the city's current total debt obligation as of the end of fiscal year 2020 was just shy of around $28 million, which sounds like a lot, but the total debt allotment debt ceiling for the City of Lexington is around $59 million. So the city is, is well below that and is, that's extremely impressive how, how the city has handled it. So those were kind of the main points I'd like to touch on tonight. If anyone has any questions on myself or Dr. Jane, would be happy to, happy to answer them for you.
Members of council have any questions for Cole?
Just a comment that I think each year this report gets better and better and it has a lot of information. But like you said, it's very digestible and very accessible. And I appreciate that very much so that the public can, can access that information easily. Very nice work.
Thank you, man.
Other members of council. Cole, on behalf of a grateful council and a grateful city, you've come a long way since your days on the mayor's youth council. And very impressed of how well informed and the great organization that you and your peers. Are your fellow cadets, are they fourth year also or different?
Simon is a, is a junior, a second classman and Harris is a third classman or second year sophomore.
Very good.
Confusing.
I'm, I'm glad you were able to show them the way. And it certainly, what you all have here reflects the priorities that city council has made specifically with infrastructure, financial management and keeping the city providing services that the citizens want and need. So thank you very, very much for being with us. I hope you do get extra credit and pass our appreciation along to Dr. Yang as well.
Awesome. Thank you all so much.
Thank you so much for the wonderful opportunity to, to have our cadets involved in this project. Has been past five, six years that we have helped the city and we hope that in the future we have opportunities to engage on cadets, also participate in this project, similar projects like this. Thank you all for having us and then for this project and all doing well and have a great week. I have to go because I have the class tonight. So over Zoom again. Jump through one to the other Zoom meeting. Okay. This is how we operate right now nowadays. All right. And good night, everyone, and have a wonderful rest of May. Bye.
Gives you hope, hope for the future with youth and professors that enthusiastic and having class at 7:45 at night. Next item on the agenda. Next item on the agenda is the, uh, public hearing to review and consider a request from Russ Orson with Perkins and Orson to amend the Lexington zoning ordinance. Arnie, I'd like to call on you to introduce this public hearing and discussion.
Sure thing. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is a request for a zoning ordinance amendment, which is 2021-02 for Russ Orson agent to reduce the parking requirement for multifamily dwellings to one parking space per multi-family dwelling unit. And the second request is to authorize limited encroachments in the yard requirements for terraces, porches, and projecting horizontal architectural features. Mr. Mayor, if I could suggest, since this is really two separate requests, that you open the item as we already have and deal with these separately, including the comments from the applicant and your discussions and staff and public input and deal with the parking first and then do the same separately for the encroachments portion.
In, in effect, have two public hearings and two votes.
Yes, sir. That'd be the same path that planning commission followed. And I think it's easier since these are two distinct items.
Terrific. Do you want to go ahead and introduce the, the parking or is that introduced enough and go ahead and open the public hearing?
I can certainly go ahead unless Russ wants to have any comments at the beginning as the applicant.
Russ, are you there?
In that case, I'll begin.
Very good.
Um, on the first page of your staff report, um, the history of this is that the planning commission did hold a duly advertised public hearing on the 25th of February. They desired additional information and in particular, a survey for the parking. So staff completed that and then it was deferred until the March 25th meeting. On the top of page 14 out of your packet, that's the existing language that we have for parking requirements for multifamily dwellings, large capacity dwellings and group homes. Currently, that is a two space requirement for each dwelling unit or one per, one parking space per bedroom, whichever is greater. And then the large capacity dwelling and group home were, um, split out of that. So that will, is proposed to stay at the two for each dwelling unit or one per bedroom, whichever is greater. And Russ's initial request was to have just the multifamily be reduced to one parking space for each dwelling unit. As you'll see, that was changed in the planning commission's recommendation is different from that initial request. The second table on page 14 lists is just a sample of some of the other jurisdictions showing how they handle multifamily parking. You will notice that some of those are a flat number of parking spaces per unit and others are based on the number of bedrooms, which is more of a sliding scale. The more bedrooms you have, the more parking spaces are required. Planning Commission, after that initial public hearing, did request a survey. So on the next page is the data from that survey. This is not a perfect, um, data set by any stretch. There are some holes in it, but the request was for staff to go out and take a look at the existing multifamily complexes and to see how many parking spaces they have and broken down by bedrooms if possible and see how many are actually utilized. So we went out, my daughter and I, on a random Tuesday, I hope, at 10:00 PM, and this lasted until 11:30. The next page, this is the data that, um, page that you see, but the next page actually is a bit better because our planning commission chair, John Driscoll, added a little bit more, crunched the numbers and added those three columns that you see in gray. So it's helpful to have the bedroom breakdown in the spaces per bedroom and the occupied ratio. I'm not going to go through all of that, but I think if you look at the spaces per bedroom and the occupied ratio per unit, you'll, I believe you'll get some comfort in that we really don't need the two spaces per unit that's currently required. Are there any questions about the survey in particular or anything else thus far? If not, I'll continue on. Um, on the next page, on page 17, um, as part of the survey did request from a couple of the owners or managers of properties, their, um, feeling or experience that they've had with the number of parking spaces that they currently have. And if that's enough or not enough, and you see responses from two property owners and managers there. Ultimately, the planning commission did make a recommendation in favor of requiring 1.25 spaces for each efficiency studio in one bedroom unit, one and a half spaces for each two bedroom unit, and two spaces for each three or more bedroom unit. That was a unanimous recommendation by planning commission. And you see a suggested motion there, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Arnie. Members of council have any questions for Arnie? Hearing none. I would like to, at 7:48, I'd like to open the public hearing. I know that we have one written, um, comment. Ms. Alexander? Can have you read that into the record?
Yes, this is from Ross Waller. I would like to commend the staff and the planning commission on the thorough research and thoughtful analysis in this proposed ordinance change to lower the parking requirements for multifamily housing. They did a great job and I hope you all vote for the change.
Thank you very much, Ms. Alexander. Um, I'm not aware of anyone else that wanted to speak to this, but is there anyone on the Zoom that would like to speak to this topic as part of the public hearing? Hearing none. Um, I would like to close the public hearing at 7:49 and ask for council's consideration.
I moved to, out of the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, or good zoning practice warrant the consideration of the following zoning ordinance amendment. And I moved to recommend approval of Z O A 2021-02 to reduce the minimum parking requirement for multifamily dwellings to 1.25 spaces for each efficiency in studio and one bedroom unit, 1.5 spaces for each two bedroom unit, and two spaces for each three or more bedroom unit.
Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Strong, a second by Mr. Ayers. Any discussion? Hearing none. I would ask for roll call vote.
I haven't come in.
Yes, sir. Sorry, Mr. Alligan.
No problem. No worries. Uh, I want to commend the planning commission and planning director, Arnie. I think the survey results, uh, as endorsed by the planning commission are fantastic and realistic.
You're here. Thank you. And thank you to Gigi for her, um, efforts. I'm sure there was no requirement to support her father in his efforts. Very good. Any other comments from council? Again, hearing none, I would ask for roll call. Mr. Smith? Hi. Mr. Alligan?
Hi.
Your heirs?
I.
Mr. Ziegler?
I.
Ms. Alexander?
I.
Strong?
I.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Good, good work, Arnie. The, uh, second item, authorize limited encroachments into yard requirements. Take it away, Arnie.
As, um, most of you know, there are yard requirements. So on your piece of property, you cannot build in the, in the front yard, side yard, or rear yard. And each zoning district has a different setback requirement, the yard being the area and the setback being the distance. Did request that there be additional authorized encroachments into the yards. And on the top of page 18 that Jamie has up there, you see the proposal that we started with. Um, we currently have, I'm going to go through the bottom of page 18. That's the existing language that we have in our zoning ordinance with respect to yard requirements. And in 4.2, not A and B will stay as is. And then item C in their subsection C says, all yards and courts required by this chapter shall be open and and obstructed to the sky. And the very next section, which is 4.3, we have some exemptions to that for fences, walls, hedges, and ramps. And then the last place that we have regulation in the zoning ordinance dealing with yards is in the definition section. And you will see for the front, rear, and side yard, there is an exemption for steps specifically. Going on to the bottom of the next page, which is page, bottom of page 19, I've done a little bit of formatting to change that. I'm sorry, Jane, you've gone just a little bit too far. If you don't mind going back up. The formatting change is to consolidate all of those items into a revised 4.2. So as you see on your page there, item C, um, number one is fences, walls, and hedges. And number two would be handicap accessible ramps. That's existing language just being brought forward from 4.3. And then the new language B would be in item three, which reads, and I'll read it for the record, porches, balconies, decks, stoops, landings. Unenclosed porches, balconies, decks, stoops, or landings may project not more than five feet beyond the front side and rear walls of a building into the minimum front side or rear yard setback for the district and shall not be closer than five feet from any lot line. Unenclosed shall mean no siding closure other than railings that is more than 18 inches in height exclusive of screens. Any two-story or enclosed porch shall be considered a part of the building in the determination of the required setback. What that means is that a porch, balcony, deck, and stoop or landing can be, can encroach an additional five feet into the front side or rear yard requirements as long as they are not closer than five feet from any property line. The reason you want to have a minimum of five feet between a property line and a structure is that's the minimum required for fire safety to be able to access a, a wall or a side of a building. So that's why the five feet minimum is included in there. The unenclosed in particular means that you can have a porch, as an example, with screens and with a railing that's not more than 18 inches in height. But if you enclose that further with, let's say, windows or a railing that is higher than that, that becomes more and more of a structure and therefore does not fall into this exemption of the additional five feet. And then the two-story porch is also deemed to be too much of a, a structure or a mass to be able to encroach into the setback. Are there any particular questions about the porches, balconies, decks, stoops, or landings encroachment? If not, the next item would be item number four, which is projecting horizontal architectural features. Architectural features such as window sills, belt courses, chimneys, cornices, eaves, roof overhangs, bay windows, or canopies may project not more than three feet into any required setback, but no closer than five feet to any lot line. A bay window, which is not more than 10 feet wide, may extend three feet into a required yard. Any questions about the proposed horizontal architectural features?
Arnie, just to, uh, can confirm in my mind, if it's a, a 10-foot setback, this is saying that the, for instance, canopy can go three feet into that 10-foot setback. So the setback is from the, the physical edge of the building, not anything, canopies or that are identified in this part.
That's correct. And if you wanted a deeper canopy, you would just set your wall further back from the property line. And that way you could accommodate something such as a larger canopy or porch or balcony or other feature. So your porch isn't limited to five feet, your canopy isn't limited to three feet. But we're just trying to provide a little bit more leeway for having, um, encroachments into a setback and therefore more buildable area.
Great. Thank you.
The last one is just bringing forward that steps may encroach into a front side and rear. And that comes from the definition section. We're just bringing it forward so that we, again, have everything consolidated in one location to make it easier. On the next page, which is page 21 of your staff report, we've brought forward those items in 4.3. So they are proposed to be stricken. And then there are three definitions that are proposed to be added, you know, that will help to find some of those items that are to be allowed into the yard encroachments. Be happy to answer any questions.
Members of council have any questions on these details? Excellent. Crystal clear. Good job, Arnie. At this time, uh, I'd like to open the public hearing on the second item to authorize limited encroachments into yard requirements. And is there anyone who would like to speak to this matter opening up at 7:58? Not aware of anyone that zoomed in or, uh, requested to speak and seeing no one raising their hand or otherwise expressing a desire to speak, well, we'll close the public hearing and ask for council's consideration.
The public necessity, convenience, general welfare, or good zoning practice warrant the consideration of the following zoning ordinance amendment. And I move to recommend approval of Z O A 2021-02 to authorize limited encroachments into yard requirements for porches, balconies, decks, stoops, landings, and projecting horizontal architectural features as recommended by the planning commission.
Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Strong, a second by Mr. Ayers. Thank you both. Any discussion?
I have a quick question. So these are two separate motions on two separate ordinances. And if that's the case, is it one ordinance or two ordinances?
One ordinance. We were taking it in two parts.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Hearing no other questions, I'd ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Alligan?
Hi.
Mr. Ziegler?
Hi.
Ms. Strong?
I.
Mr. Smith?
Hi.
Mr. Ayers?
I.
Ms. Alexander?
Hi.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much.
I'd just like to throw in a thank you too, to, uh, Russ Orson for his help with this and especially to Arnie for all his work on both these pieces of the ordinance.
And I'd like to pile on by saying my thanks to the planning commission who did, uh, such good work and exhaustive work on the comprehensive plan. Uh, and also thoroughly, as evidenced by the, the charts and thoughtful dialogue, I'm sure that took place. Um, and with John Driscoll as the, the chair of the planning commission. Uh, your, your work isn't always noticed, but it's vital, uh, as Ms. Strong organized, to have good zoning practices and for the necessity, convenience, and general welfare of our public. So, uh, thank, thank you all for, uh, addressing these issues as we work to make Lexington a wonderful, more wonderful place to live and play. Next item on the agenda at 6.2 is a public hearing, a review and consideration of a draft street renaming policy. The policy has been, uh, under review for several months and gone through lots of iterations. Before I open the public hearing, want to offer the city manager any, uh, introduction that he'd like to provide?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. As you indicated, this has been reviewed, uh, very extensively by city council. And you see the draft before you that is the work of that review and the changes that have been made. The only other change that should be noted is in, section G, and it has to do with, uh, the time period after renaming or failure of renaming a street when another request could be made. There was some discussion at the last meeting that that should be lengthened and approximate the time in between, uh, or simply similar to the time after a street is renamed until another renaming request could be made so that, uh, in a similar fashion, neighbors in that, in or on that street are not bombarded every year or every few months with another request to name or rename the street. This is just a suggestion, of course. The council can, uh, elect any time period they wish. It had been six months. There was some discussion that was, should be longer, five years to approximate the other, uh, period we have in the code or the policy. So that's all I need to make sure council understands tonight.
And for the purpose of, uh, public hearing and council's consideration, it would be the policy inclusive of the five-year, the six-month would be stricken at this point. It's always welcome to change, uh, words, Smith, as much as you'd like. With that introduction, I'd like to open the public hearing. I know that we have, uh, one individual who had contacted that wanted to speak over Zoom. And, um, Reginald Early and Reverend Early, I'd call on you and say the podium is yours.
Good evening and thank you so much. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Friedman and Vice Mayor Alexander and city council members. My name is Reginald A. Early. I live in Lexington and I'm the president of the Rockbridge County NAACP. Rockbridge, the Rockbridge County NAACP stands in full support of renaming streets with Confederate, with Confederate names to names that would be appropriate and represents the diversity that is Lexington, Virginia. I would suspect that when the city fathers gave street names that honor the Confederacy, they did not have in mind the feelings or opinions or consideration of the African-American community who live in Lexington and more specifically of African-Americans who would make their residency on those various streets. While some say keeping those names as they are is not offensive to the African-American community, it is. And the Rockbridge County NAACP says that it is. We implore you to seize the opportunity before you to make it right by changing the names. Because it is the right thing to do for Lexington, its residents and especially the residents who happen to be African-Americans. Thank you so much. God bless.
Thank you, Reverend Early, and thank you for being with us. We appreciate your, your comments and representation of your words in the NAACP. Next is Michael Deering and a call on Ms. Alexander to get us started reading comments into the record.
Members of city council, my name is Michael Deering and I grew up in Lexington attending Lexington City Schools and RCHS. Specifically, I live on Stonewall Street. I've lived on Stonewall Street for fifteen years and continue to call it home through college and to the present day. I don't believe we should glorify Confederate leaders' legacies with memorials and namesakes. I don't think I shouldn't, should have been raised in a town that led me to believe Confederate generals fought for a noble cause and absolutely overlooked their efforts to preserve slavery. And I don't believe Stonewall Street is a fitting name for the pleasant neighborhood I grew up in. It's hard for me to understand why anyone would want their street to be named after a man who fought on the wrong side of a war to preserve slavery. Living in Lexington, so, living in Lexington so long, you almost become blind to it. But I genuinely feel embarrassed to tell people outside of Rockbridge the name of the street I grew up on. It is an embarrassment to our city. But beyond my disgust at my personal indoctrination and the name of my street, at a certain point, I came to understand that these monuments and namesakes caused pain to many black residents of Lexington and Rockbridge. I feel foolish that there was ever unclear to me. But let's put it plainly, these namesakes serve to alienate people of color in our community who have the same claim to Rockbridge as any other citizen in the area. I don't presume to know your faith, but as a Christian, I would like, I would ask you to remember Jesus's words when he told us to love our, thy neighbor as thyself. Do you feel that you're doing that? Ask yourself what is to be lost and what is to be gained. It is well within city council's power to rename the streets without creating legal and financial obstacles to do so. Yes, you will get pushback and I understand that is not an easy decision for you. I won't say that I envy your position right now, but I ask that you listen to your hearts and do the hard thing, the right thing, and do not pass this, this policy designed to prevent positive change. We need to rename these streets immediately. Thank you, Michael Deering.
This letter is from Donald Sensible. Dear city council, I followed closely during your last meeting on April one. I agree with and support the plan to move forward with New Market Street as a test case for changing the street names as put forward by council member Ayers. I would like to offer my personal thanks to the resident of New Market Street for agreeing to such a plan. I further agree with moving forward incrementally on the issue of changing city street names instead of seeking to change all of the street names associated with Confederacy at once. But I do believe that should be implemented to change all the relevant names in the coming years. I also agree with the marks made by city, council member Alexander regarding the need to waive the four hundred dollar fee when the city initiates a street name change. But I still believe the proposed policy is deeply flawed and maintain the views expressed in my last letter against adopting said policy. If the New Market test case is successful, I hope the city will set aside funds in future years for renaming streets associated with the Confederacy, including for paying fees assumed by property owners on those streets associated with the renaming. Thank you for all the hard work that you do. Sincerely, Donald Sensible.
This letter is from Bucky and Joan Joyce, Lexington city council members. This is to express our support for the city's currently proposed procedure for street renaming. We suggest that the residents, businesses and property owners of any individual street are the ones most directly affected and the city's current proposal takes that into account. If or when those individuals and entities decide it's time for a change, then so be it. Sincerely, Bucky and Joan Joyce.
A letter from Anna De Roach. To whom it may concern, I'm writing to you about street renaming. The name change for streets impacts all residents of that street. They must change their mailing addresses, deeds, bank accounts, checks, licenses, et cetera. All things with their address on them. I don't think the minimal charge imposed is too much to ask for, considering the big headaches this will cause. No matter what the street name, everyone will not be happy. Why is history of the USA and founding fathers, good or bad, being deleted? All history matters. Anna De Roach, Natural Bridge.
From Karen Van, I'm sorry, Karen N. Neff. My name is Karen N. Neff and I am blessed to be a lifelong resident of such a beautiful and historic city, Lexington, Virginia. I am a property owner on Jackson Avenue and Nelson Street. I believe that adopting a criteria for renaming city streets is critical. This should consist of a well-thought-out process and not just pick and choose a street because someone thinks its name is offensive. The example of the streets being considered because they were named after men who served in the Confederate Army is a perfect, is a perfect example. Let's take Jackson Avenue and Lee Avenue for starters. If we are going to change the names of these streets because Thomas Stonewall Jackson and Robert Edward Lee served in the Confederate Army, then to be consistent, we must also include in that list many other streets such as Edmondson Avenue. James K. Edmondson was a colonel in Stonewall Brigade during the Civil War. Letcher Avenue, as the Civil War governor of Virginia, he was an adamant supporter of the Confederacy. How about Preston Street during the Civil War? John Thomas Louis Preston served on the personal staff of Stonewall Jackson. The list goes on and on to include such streets as McCorkle Drive, McLaughlin Street, Massey Street, Junkin Place, George Junkin's daughter Eleanor was the first wife of Stonewall Jackson. She died in childbirth. Ross Road, Ruffner Place and many, many more. Additionally, consideration must be given to the overall contribution these men and women gave to the life of the city. The Civil War lasted only four years and we should remember that during an era, a Virginian's first loyalty was to their state and their second to their country. Most of these men were valuable contributors to the community, both before and after the Civil War, and we cannot disregard that. The same goes for any other reasons for changing street names. We must carefully look at reason, at the reason for the name change and apply consistently to all streets in that category. I sincerely hope that over the coming years, we embrace our rich history, learn from it and not try and change it or erase it. It would be sad to drive around on A, B and C Street or First, Second and Third Street. Not to mention, how would you even decide what a new street name would be and would it suffice going forward? I hope is that you can carefully consider all of the implications before proceeding and changing any street names in Lexington. Thank you for listening respectfully, Karen N. Neff, Lexington, Virginia.
From Ross Waller. In formulating the street renaming policy, it seems to me the city manager and council are immensely overthinking the process. Because the, sorry, because the proposal incorporates absurdly high hurdles, a reasonable person might conclude that you're trying to make sure the five lost cause street names stay the same. This policy certainly gives you a nice place to hide from a controversial question, but that would be a terrible reason to vote for it. I hope you all vote against adopting this unnecessary policy and proceed directly to changing the five street names on the authority you already have.
This is from Doris and Michael Strickler. My wife and I wish to reiterate our support for the proposed plan by city council for the possible renaming of certain streets in Lexington. To allow the homeowners on these streets to make that decision is fair and equitable. As an aside, a quick perusal of documents in our household, which would need to be changed with a renaming, totaled at least fifty-five, that's a lot of hassle, but certainly it can be done. And we are willing to do so if seventy-five percent of our neighbors wish to make a street name change. We urge city council to maintain its current proposal. Doris and Michael Strickler.
This from Fifty Ways Rockbridge. To the members of Lexington City Council, please find below the text and names of the signers of the petition requesting your action on renaming five Confederate-themed streets in Lexington. As of April fourteen, the petition has been signed by the boards of four civic organizations and three hundred thirty-five individuals. The petition collected names, addresses and voting districts of each signer, which might be of interest to you as elected representative. Forty-nine percent of the signers vote in Lexington City and an additional seventeen percent are as yet ineligible to vote, generally because they are under age eighteen. Those two groups together account for two hundred twenty-two signers. Sixteen percent of the signers are residents who support the goal of changing Lexington's Confederate street names, but who do not vote in our region. Eighteen percent of signers vote in Rockbridge or Buna Vista. The time to change the street names is now. The power to do so rests with you. You have the ability to institute the change and to minimize the cost and hassle on residents of the streets. The groups listed below stand ready to help. Passing an ordinance placing the power to change street names in the hands of those who happen to own property there at this point in time is not democracy. It is an abdication of your duty to lead our community toward a less racist future and make our city welcoming to all residents and visitors. Please consider making the change tonight. Respectfully, the board of Fifty Ways Rockbridge. And the petition says, we believe, we petition the city council of Lexington, Virginia to commit to renaming whose current names preserve a damaging legacy of veneration for the generals of the Confederacy and the lost cause of a society built on slavery. Confederate Circle, Jackson Avenue, Lee Avenue, Rebel Ridge and Stonewall Street. We believe that the streets of our city, just as much as constituent parts like its city cemeteries, belong to the community and not solely to the property owners on each street. Further, we believe that reconciliation with Lexington's past requires the moral leadership of our elected officials and is explicitly named as a task to be addressed in the city's recently adopted comprehensive plan. For these reasons, we oppose the street renaming plan the council is currently considering. It will lay the burden and cost of this reckoning and reconciliation where it does not belong on individual property owners who are neither responsible for naming the streets that run in front of their parcels nor have a greater claim to preserving or removing those names. We ask that an ongoing process of renaming streets begin with a council vote to agree to remove the current names and establish a citizens committee charged with researching and recommending to council within three months a slate of new names along with citizens handbook for handling the practical consequences for those households directly affected. This petition is sponsored by the community organizations represented below and is endorsed by the individuals signing it. Fifty Ways Rockbridge, Rockbridge NAACP, CARE, C-A-R-E, Rockbridge and Rockbridge Justice Coalition. Signed and then there the names. Too many to remember.
This next message is from Rosie Dixon. My name is Rosie Dixon and I graduated from RCHS in two thousand and sixteen. I lived in Rockbridge County for about six years. I support renaming Confederate streets and support the test case proposed at the last meeting, though the progress shouldn't stop there. I do not support the ordinance which burdens residents and inhibits street name changes. Thank you for your time.
This is a note from Fifty Ways Rockbridge, the Rockbridge Justice Coalition and the Rockbridge NAACP. Dear members of Lexington City Council, we are writing in regard to the street renaming policy. We remain committed to a thoughtful, careful move to change the names of our streets that venerate Confederate heroes and the lost cause. To that end, we respectfully request that you do use New Marketplace as a test case to understand the financial and logistical costs of changing the streets' names. But you not vote for the current policy because it, because its fees and requirements put the onus on citizens to do what our leaders should do. The Rock, the Racial Justice Coalition has put together a list of tasks and concomitant costs that residents would need to take care of if their streets were renamed. Please see the attachment. Members of the Fifty Ways Rockbridge Board and the RJC are ready to help residents complete these tasks. In summary, please consider, one, going ahead with the test case. Two, not voting in favor of the current policy. Three, sharing the information compiled by the Racial Justice Coalition. And four, spreading the word that members of the Fifty Ways Rockbridge Board and the RJC will help residents with tasks related to street name changes. Sincerely, Fifty Ways Rockbridge Board members, Rockbridge Justice Coalition, Rockbridge NAACP.
Excuse me, from Rick Richter. Maybe the only small positive to come out of COVID nineteen is to see many people, many more people out walking around town. We have met many nice people and dogs during our daily walks. Cars will usually stop to let you cross the street, even before we step off the curb and onto the crosswalk. In our twenty-plus years of living here, I've never heard a racist comment or even a joke based on a racial, on racial stereotypes. This is truly a nice place to live. Do I feel safer and more welcome now that the cemetery has been renamed? Does anyone? The R.A. Lee Church renamed or Stonewall Jackson statue removed from VMI? Not at all. If anything, I feel a vague threat that a presumed minority is pushing for the removal of all names that have any ties to the Confederacy or slavery. I am a Midwestern import and I don't carry any baggage about the Civil War and its historical figures. But I do like stability and I'm against change just for the sake of change. I can't really believe that people will feel safer and more welcome in this city just because, just because we changed some street names. Where does it all end? Do we have to cancel Washington and Jefferson too? I applaud the city council for taking a cautious approach to this pressure from the woke culture. Changes in street names, if any, should be based on the feelings of a majority of the citizens of Lexington and not on the perceived pressure from a vocal few.
Dear city council members, my name is Elizabeth McClung and I'm writing in support of the renaming of Confederate streets. Confederate symbolism does not belong anywhere, especially not in our town and not on our street signs. I'm also writing in opposition of a policy that would make it more difficult to rename streets. All Confederate street names should be removed as soon as possible without any barriers. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Dan Walts and Amy Richwine. The residents of Ten Edmondson Avenue advise council to, for possible name changes for the five Confederate name streets discussed in previous session, council will provide at the next slated election for Lexington residents a referendum on renaming the five Confederate name streets highlighted in the previous council meeting. If a majority of city voters choose to change the names of these streets-
If a majority of city voters choose to change the names of these streets, council to appoint an ad hoc committee to select new names for these streets. Allow a simple majority of residents living on any name street to change that, the name of that street. If a simple majority elects to change a street name, a recommendation for a new street name will be made by the ad hoc committee identified above with input from representatives who live on that street. All costs incurred by the city in renaming streets will be included for funding in the next budget cycle. Sincerely yours, the Richwine Waltz Family.
This letter is from Sarah Bashy Chotary. Hello, members of city council. My name is Sarah Bashy Chotary. I am currently a student at Rockbridge County High School and I have lived in Rockbridge my whole life. I write today to reiterate the importance of renaming Confederate streets. The legacy of hatred and racial violence should not be tolerated within our community. I'd also like to ask that you do not pass the policy that makes renaming streets more difficult, placing a fine and the burden of asking to change the names on the residents. The test case proposed at the last city council meeting is a great idea. However, I want to emphasize that street renaming should in no way end there. All our Confederate street names should be changed. As a community, we can show that we are inclusive to everyone by acknowledging that glorifying racists and our racist history is wrong. Thank you, Sarah Bashy Chotary.
This message is from Lily Youngman. I'm Lily, a student in RCHS, and I think the Confederate street names in Lexington need to change and there should be no policies passed to make that process harder. The test case is a great idea and a good start, but that's just the beginning. And eventually, all of the street names should change. Confederate symbols are racist and they are spread throughout our community enough already. There's no reason why we shouldn't change these street names.
This message is from Patricia Lee Anthony and William C. Anthony. It's actually a petition. To Lexington City Council, considering of renaming streets, dear city council members, please accept the attached petition in opposition to the renaming of Jackson Avenue. The petitioners, who are all Jackson Avenue homeowners, are strongly opposed to a name change and request that the council not move forward on approval of street name changes without the consent of affected homeowners. This list is not all-inclusive of Jackson Avenue homeowners who oppose a street name change. Some homeowners were unavailable to sign the petition. More importantly, as demonstrated in correspondence to the city council and disclosed in our contacts, there are also homeowners who prefer not to sign the petition but are opposed to a street name change and the unnecessary burdens renaming imposes on homeowners. Thank you for your consideration. Patricia Lee Anthony and William C. Anthony, 506 Jackson Avenue, Lexington, Virginia. I'll read the start of the petition. We, the undersigned Jackson Avenue Lexington, Virginia property owners, strongly object to the renaming of our street. Changing the current street name would be onerous and unnecessary. It would be an onerous and unnecessary burden which would require each property owner to amend numerous personal and property records. We are alarmed by discussions that contemplate city council changing the name unilaterally with no regard for the wishes and rights of Jackson Avenue property owners.
From Hallie Klein. Dear city council, my name is Hallie Klein and I have lived in Lexington for the past 16 years. I'm writing to express my support for the proposal to use the renaming of New Marketplace as a test case in the effort to rename all Confederate streets in Lexington and to reiterate my opposition to the proposed ordinance, which would place the final financial burden of street renaming on community members. Given the discussion at the last city council meeting, New Marketplace seems like a very ideal test case. However, I ask that this test case would truly mark the beginning of an ongoing commitment to renaming all streets that currently have Confederate names. Further, I ask that you vote against the proposed ordinance, which places the financial responsibility for these changes on community members, as it is imperative that we do not construct unnecessary barriers to this much-needed change. Sincerely, Hallie Klein.
Hello, my name is Arden Courtney Collins. I have lived in the city of Lexington my entire life and am currently a junior at Rockbridge County High School. I would like to reiterate how important it is that the Lexington City Council take initiative in changing Confederate street names. The current Confederate street names celebrate and glorify white supremacy and do not align with the values our community should strive for. Passing this new policy puts unnecessary pressure on homeowners in a situation where the city council should be taking the lead, not making things more difficult. While the use of a test case is a good first step, it's important that the city council doesn't stop there and continues uprooting racism in our own community, making it more accepting place for people of all races. Thank you for your time, Arden Courtney Collins.
My name is Owen Collins and I'm a Lexington resident. Street names are not about records of history. That is what history textbooks and museums take care of. Street names are honoring people, places, or things that are chosen by the community as to be so important as to be woven into everyone's everyday lives. What we choose to honor as a community can change every time. That is a testament to the evolution of our city, county, and country. There are things that we, that were chosen for honors a long time ago that would not be chosen today or tomorrow. While I am proud of my family history, that includes three generations of service to our country, the values of my great-grandfather are not the values of today. That is what we must address with the street names that glorify individuals or words of the Confederacy. Thank you for your work on our, for our community, Owen. That's Owen Collins.
This letter is from Moshanni Bashy Chotary. Dear city council, as a lifelong resident of Lexington and as someone who is tired of seeing our town venerate the Confederacy and all it stood for, I was grateful to hear council members propose a test case idea at the last meeting about renaming streets. I think it's insightful and resourceful to start the journey to inclusivity with a different name for New Market Street. However, it's important to keep in mind that this step should be seen as the beginning of a process and not the end of the line. And I want to note that the proposed test case will not follow the guidelines proposed in the ordinance, since the fee will likely be waived and no 75% majority will be required. Instead, it will be an excellent example of council taking the lead and assuming the burden of street renaming. I would love to see all of you continue this approach as we move forward in the effort to make Lexington more welcoming. Please do not use this test case as an excuse to pass an ordinance that makes it so difficult to improve our community. I also want to reiterate that when many of us speak about the importance of renaming streets, we are in no way trying to dismiss the concerns of our fellow community members. And we are more than willing to lend a helping hand to any who are afraid of the adjustments a new street name will require. But if you want Lexington to be a better place, we have to be ready to put in the work that will get it there. I want Lexington to be a better place. I hope city council and everyone in attendance here tonight wants that too. Thank you, Moshanni.
This letter is from Ben Grigsby. Mayor Friedman, city councilors, and city manager, Halas. I write to express my strong support for your proposed policy regarding possible name changes to Lexington city streets. While I do not envy the prisoner's dilemma you face on this contentious issue, surely the right way forward is one that is measured, respectful of community sentiments on both sides of the debate, and equally respectful of the homeowners on those streets targeted for change, with due consideration to their costs in dollars and hassle. I submit that change to any street name without the clear majority agreement by that street homeowners, streets homeowners is patently unfair. Your proposed policy addresses this objectively, transparently, and unonerously. There are two aspects to the name change process. Firstly, reaching a majority decision to change a name. And next, the very difficult second step, changing it to what? The homeowners of properties affected must be fully engaged and agreed by clear majority in both steps. The notion that some vaguely defined citizens committee should drive new names is a guaranteed recipe for extreme divisiveness that will last for lifetimes. How on earth might such a committee be populated? The name change process must seek to bring our community closer together, yet without broad engagement, especially those bearing the full burden of any possible change, you will create chaos. There are other elements that are obvious. Where will the name change advocacy stop? The initial target in the Fifty Ways flyer listed five street names. What about the 18 street names quoted in a letter to council? Surely, many others will be found by those so minded. What happens if the proposed new name by some committee inflames homeowner emotions? Lastly, name changes will incur significant costs to the city, above and beyond the significant burden on those personally impacted. Surely, there are better uses for such funds. I recommend allocations to addressing Lexington's difficult history. While I'm the preservationist owner of one of Lexington's most historic homes, my comments would be the same even if I lived on Pine Street. In closing, I most strongly urge council to move forward and enact their proposed policy on Lexington street names. I wish you wisdom and trust that you will find a durable way forward to this complex matter. Sincerely, Ben Grigsby.
A note from Kyle Hills. My name is Kyle Hills and I'm proud to be from Lexington. I support the renaming of Confederate streets such as Lee Street, Jackson Avenue, and Rebel Ridge. I support the proposal at the last city council meeting about using New Market Street as a test case. However, we can't stop there. I do not support the new policy, which makes it more difficult for street names to be changed. It is not right to impose a $400 fee for changing street names and to hand over all decision-making solely to property owners, nor is it right to create the unnecessary barrier of requiring 75% approval, much more than a simple majority. Thank you for hearing my comment.
From Chris Ritter. Dear council members, I am a Lexington resident and have lived in Lexington nearly all, nearly, nearly my entire life. I'm writing like many others tonight to oppose the proposed ordinance that would require a $400 fee to apply for a street renaming and would require a 75% vote of landowners individuals to rename the street. As I've said at prior meetings, not only would this ordinance disenfranchise those unable to pay such a fee, but it would also disenfranchise those who live on these streets who do not own land, such as spouses, family members of voting age, and renters. This ordinance is reminiscent of a time in this country when citizens can only participate in democracy if they were wealthy landowners. When I was talking about the ordinance today with an older family member, he compared it to the poll tax of the Jim Crow era. This ordinance is hopelessly outdated. It would be an embarrassment for the city to adopt it. The renaming of streets is a public issue and should be treated as such. The names of streets are public representations of what we value as a town, and every person in this town has the right to be part of the renaming process. The proposed ordinance does not even give that right to people who live on these streets. While I strongly oppose this ordinance, I would like to voice my support for the idea proposed at the last city council meeting to use the New Market Street as a test case for renaming. Doing so would allow the town to see what work goes into street naming. It would show what work must be done by residents and what, what, what work must be done by city government. I would also like to point out that using the New Market Street test case would show what a renaming process would look like without the proposed ordinance. Therefore, the success of the test case should not be used to justify adopting the ordinance. Lastly, I would like to draw attention to the amount of misinformation that is spread about the complications of renaming streets and the potential burdens that would fall to residents. While we should acknowledge that residents will deal with some complications from the changing of their addresses, the severity of these complications has been exaggerated and blown far out of the proportion by people who do not live on these streets and in many cases do not even live in this town. City council should work with the Lexingtonians who are trying to dispel these rumors. Citizens deserve clarity on this process and it is far less burdensome than it has made up then, at, then, I'm sorry, than it has been made out to be. Regards, Chris Ritter.
From Gus Spencer. Dear city council, I am writing to you to support the renaming of Lexington's Confederate street names and to oppose the ordinance that is clearly intended to stymie such a measure. It's time we stopped using our public space, spaces to celebrate those who fought to defend the darkest moment in our nation's history. Renaming the streets is a necessary step toward making Lexington a more inclusive and welcoming space for everyone. Please just do it. Thank you, Gus Spencer.
Thank you, council members, for reading those into the record. And thank you to all the people who took the time to communicate and offer their insights and opinions to council. Not aware of anyone else who wants to, on this matter? Is there anyone else on Zoom that would like the opportunity to address council in this public hearing? Hearing none. I will close the public hearing at 8:39 and ask for council's consideration and discussion.
I move to approve the renaming streets policy.
As, as changed with the five-year? That's my question. But at the beginning, that was what's under consideration.
Yeah, that's what's included in this one, so we'll start with that, yes.
I would prefer to have a little bit of discussion before we...
Certainly before we vote, we have a motion and I provided a second for the purpose of discussion. And Dennis, you can lead us in discussion.
Okay. I am of the belief that, that tonight may not be the time to pass this particular policy. And that's not because I disagree with the general outline of this policy. I do believe that the residents of a particular street, because the burden is going to be mostly on them, should be heavily considered in, in the renaming of streets. And so, as the general contours of our policy, I am in agreement with. However, I do believe that we could learn a bit from the changing New Market Street's name, and I, I see no reason why we couldn't basically shelve this policy. Not, not to say I disagree with it and proceed, you know, along those lines, but I don't necessarily feel that we have to pass this policy tonight.
Thank you, Dennis.
I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
I agree with Dennis Ayers in that the test case is a good case to move forward on and that the matter shouldn't be passed or voted for tonight, but should not be accepted on establishing the ordinance. It's also my opinion that public responsibility for doing this really is the job of city council mainly. And, and for that reason, I, I couldn't support adopting the policy tonight. I think that there are three, as I look at it, there are three camps, if you will. You have people who are rightly for the policy. You have people who are rightly against the policy. And you have a third group of people who don't want to be involved or have, have to buy into the hassle or the aggravation or the annoyance, I'm not sure what the right word is, for it. So there are three camps and I'm not sure that any, if any one of them is adopted, that it's right in there. And so, I would support Dennis Ayers' suggestion to shelve the matter, but proceed with the test case to see how it plays out. End of comment.
I, I really want to make it clear that the Confederate names of streets, structures, et cetera, are offensive to black citizens, as Reverend Early mentioned. And it seems that the younger our citizens are, the more offensive it is right now. Now, the older, older citizens, especially longtime residents, as far as our black citizens are concerned, it's still just as offensive, but then the longer you're here, you develop... But then the longer you're here, you develop somewhat of a blindness to this. And unfortunately, a complacency to it. Is that complacency there because it's just easier to deal with it that way? Could be. But I think that it doesn't mean that change was not needed years ago. It's just that it's something that the black citizens knew would be a winless battle to present something like this alone. And fast forward to 2021, seems to be a time of change. This is a time of reckoning with such a past history that we have. And we're faced with decisions such as these. Change is good, it really is. But I still feel strongly that we should have a fair process, one that will not cause even more resentment and division in our community. If it's something that citizens are made to do, that you have to do it or else. But until we put the work into our community to help our neighbors to understand, to challenge their hearts, challenge their minds and their thoughts about this, that over time, those who may disagree could be just as wholeheartedly embracing this as the other citizens who are petitioning for for this change. Otherwise, we'll have a divisive divisive situation among us. And this is not what this community is about. I see two approaches to this, two possible approaches. Postpone the approval while starting the test case to determine what all was involved in it. And then return to the policy to revise it based on findings that we have throughout the process of the test case. Or the other idea could be to approve the policy now with much hesitation, but start the test case and return to the policy on September 2nd, a meeting on September 2nd to make it official that that's a date that we would go back for revisions based on the findings from the test case and what needs to be changed, such as the fee structure, who initiates the changes in the street street names and how it's initiated. And those are just my ideas.
I would agree with what Marilyn said in my preference would be with go for the second is go ahead and approve this because it seems to be causing a lot of uncertainty and concern on all sides. And I just want to make it clear with this policy that this policy is to help us consider proposals. City Council is not losing our right to change a name whenever city council decides. I mean, that it says city council can rename streets by resolution period. And then it cites the city code, which says that same statement period. We can, we can initiate it at any time that we want. This policy allows the community, the residents on the street, if you want to rename your street, this is how you go about doing it. And I very much like the idea of moving forward with this and I am fine at this point, we wait if anything that's causing anyone concern, waiving the fee at this point or anything else as an initial starting point, we do the test case. And then we, like Marilyn said, come back revisit in September. And and a policy can be revised at any time as well. But I think this will help allay a lot of fears at this point and at the same time make progress on on in the community.
Be interested in a friendly amendment to a September 2nd revision meeting?
Yes, definitely.
So I appreciate the time that staff has taken to work at the council to develop the policy we are considering. I also appreciate the input from citizens and especially appreciate the positive contributions of the citizens who brought forth the issue of renaming one of Lexington's two cemeteries last summer and their continued engagement with local government to push and to educate the city about the impact of some of our street names that have ties to the Confederacy. In my research, streets are typically named for people as a universally accepted way of publicly honoring a person's achievements and extraordinary contributions. To me, if we were naming streets in Lexington today, we would not select many of the names that currently exist in the city since our citizens are better educated about certain individuals' roles in our history. This leads me to believe that many of our street names are outdated. And for many folks in their daily lives, when something is outdated, they research alternatives and work to replace it if possible. Sometimes it is inconvenient and costs money to replace something that is outdated in our lives. And oftentimes, we become attached to items that are outdated and this makes replacing them more difficult. One of the struggles I have with many of our street names is that the cat is out of the bag on who the individuals are and why they are named for those individuals. And I don't see it in our future where we will end up believing that it's in our best interests to somehow look for extraordinary contributions by these individuals that looks past their military service for which they are supposedly revered, that had it been successful, slavery would still exist. So with the responsibility I have as a council member, I try to educate myself and I try to understand issues from varying points of view. I also look for community engagement because I do not have all the answers. I believe in transparency. And I do believe that published policies and procedures offer transparency to all citizens. So I am very appreciative that we have a test case before us, that we can evaluate the naming of a single, the renaming of a single street to understand what that means for the city and for that individual. And what we can learn from that, that test case, we can implement. And I think it's a great idea to set them, put a date on the calendar as the vice mayor said. And I have always been open to waiving the $400 fee as I've shared before, how we always waive peddler's fees for valuable, you know, functions within the city. Because I would not want a $400 fee to ever stand in the way of something positive within our community, no matter where it is. So in closing, I do appreciate the work of the Rockbridge Justice Coalition, the NAACP, the Care Rockbridge Group and Fifty Ways Rockbridge because they've challenged us all and we need to challenge each other. And and I think that it's beneficial that if we do and when we do most likely change street names, that there are folks within our community that are offering to help and to and to help alleviate some of the concerns that some folks are feeling.
I guess I'm up. Like like David said, I'd like to thank the NAACP and Rockbridge Justice Coalition and Fifty Ways Rockbridge and and care on bringing this issue forward. It 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 brings about dialogue, it brings about discussion, it brings about opportunity on acknowledging our faults and our successes. A few things that that I'd like to point out or take note of. There was there's some language that that seems to imply that city council is derelict in duty by ignoring our comp plan. And I sort of have, I want to make something clear. The language is welcome citizen initiated request to rename streets linked to to the Confederacy and enslavement of people. And I think we're doing that. We are not ignoring citizen initiated requests. We are listening to them. We're listening to everybody in this process. So I I think that should be clarified. A few of the things on my list. The use of burden, I think, is being applied, maybe not correctly. I would change it to responsibility or obligation or opportunity in in this regard. I think a fee in this process, and like David said, we can waive and forgive fees as needed, but it adds legitimacy to the process. It it, I think, prevents frivolity of 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 noise toward toward counsel. But the legitimate claims of 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 change, I I think, should be heard. And like David said, if a fee gets in the way, then then we can, we can discuss that at the time. One thing that Oshani Basu Shadri said last meeting, do not pass the policy instead, consider more effective pathway for change. And I think that's the opportunity for the groups that are promoting the change to work with the residents on these streets to establish some dialogue and have a much broader grassroots effort for for changing street names. I think as as some have said, a unilateral decree by by council changing names is is not maybe the best way forward in this case or in these cases. For example, Confederate Circle has thirteen houses on it. Rebel Ridge has thirteen houses on it. Stonewall Street has twenty five houses on it, roughly plus or minus one. Jackson Avenue has fifty four houses. Lee Avenue has, I counted sixteen, but about half of those are overseen by Washington and Lee University. So we're dealing with really over a hundred households if the proposed street name changes just happened. To that end, within the city, we really don't know the pathway forward to to change street names. Council says, okay, we're going to change this street name to this. Okay, so so then what? We're really not sure. So the test case for for New Market, I think, is 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 appropriate and it'll be a good lesson learned on on ways to move forward in this process. I'm encouraged by the dialogue that has come forward in in this process. I'll also hear the residents on these streets that are concerned with the the implications or consequences of of the street, street name changes and their voices should be heard just just as well. I'm looking forward to see how things work out in New Market and and how that moves forward. I would prefer we have the policy in place as part of that because it it provides a process if in the meantime, residents on Rebel Ridge or Stonewall or Jackson or Confederate or Lee want to move forward with this with a street name change. It gives them the opportunity to do that. So that in in light of that, I'd lean toward the second suggestion that that Marilyn has has put forward.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I will point out that this is not a, it's been advertised and discussed as a Confederate street renaming policy and that's simply not accurate. This would be applicable to all streets in the city of Lexington. So if the residents of Sellers Avenue or Jordan or Sunset or any other want to make a change, this gives them a clear path and a way to work with their neighbors to affect that change that may be important for a variety of reasons. The hot topic in our little village with being the resting places of Robert E. Lee and Stonewall Jackson, the Confederacy is the the bigger underlying issue. But I do want to remind people, this is not a Confederate street policy. There are very strong opinions and feelings associated with this policy and the the street renaming. But I want to extend my appreciation to council for what anyone who's listening tonight, you all are hearing a very thoughtful, very hardworking, they've done a lot of research, number of houses on streets, a tremendous amount of listening through our lengthy meetings. And then that's not to mention conversations in on the street corner or the grocery store and other places on these hot topics that people have such strong emotions of and an incredibly conscientious team. So my hats off to all of council and staff for the work that goes into the operations of our city. In preparation for tonight, I was doing some reading and thinking about a variety of things. And there were two quotes that jumped out at me that I wanted to share before I call on council. We have a first and a second friendly amendment. Chuck, are you accepting of the amendment of September 20th?
September 2nd.
September 2nd. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
I I have a friendly amendment I'd like to offer to include in the wording, the option for council to waive the fee. Make that part of a sentence or a sentence in the regulation right now, nothing like that exists, but we've talked about it.
Leslie, since you're the owner of the motion.
Yeah, I guess my preference would be, I guess.
Leslie, before you answer, I'll call on the city attorney. Is it implicit that it's at council's discretion?
Yeah, fundamentally, it's a council's discretion. And then I think the issue with having council waive the fee procedurally, that would have the application come into the city manager's office. And then he would have to decide whether or not to bring it to council. You know, the the question is how will council be made aware? And how would that overlap with processing the application? Presumably someone could come directly to council and ask for a fee waiver and then proceed with the process from that point. But I guess that that option is something that we haven't directly thought through in terms of timing and and the best procedure to make sure everyone has an opportunity to be heard in the first instance.
Certainly.
Can I say something? And the other thing to consider about waiving the fee is for right now, you know, as Leslie said, it's better to have it in there and also have the option to waive it. But then in the next budget year, we need to be talking about how to include the costs and expenses of this in the budget.
The wording that I suggested in the friendly amendment was to include the word option. The council would have the option to waive the fee. Just wanted that since we're talking about it and we've mentioned it multiple times now. I just wanted it in the words in the document.
I think Jared's saying that's implied already, but I guess objective too, if if you put it in there.
I mean, that that's basically asking people to come to council and ask for a waiver. And and then that's fundamentally the question. And I I think where we have it now in the city manager's office is deciding, you know, if everybody comes in and says they don't want to pay the $400 fee, does everyone come to the council meeting and say, I want, I want to apply for a street renaming, but I don't want to pay the fee? I mean, just from a very practical perspective, how would we handle that?
Well, they could say that, but then council would have the option of rejecting the request.
Wouldn't you have to have some type of objective criteria to use? Otherwise, there's no need to even have it in the policy if you're going to be asking for, everybody's going to ask for a waiver.
And I know I suggested this in in last meeting to have that language in there, but I've I've I would lean on on legal opinion and and leave it out. It's implied. The 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 application when submitted to the to City Hall, that suggestion can be made verbally. If there's objection to the fee, then then during the process, they could ask for a waiver. But I I think leaving the language out of it keeps it simpler and and more direct.
So regardless of what whether you accept or not, Leslie, I don't think Chuck is. So we have a motion and second now for the two. So we have a motion and second now for the two quotes before we vote. From the words of Eleanor Roosevelt, "No one can make you feel inferior without your consent." And unidentified quote, "Whether circumstances make one bitter or better depends entirely upon the eye." As we take our votes and encourage council to embrace the outcome and as we move forward with these. Roll call vote, Mr. Smith.
I.
Ms. Strong.
I.
Mr. Ziegler.
I.
Mr. Ayers.
To clarify, this is with the the Maryland suggested amendment that we revisit this in September, correct?
That is correct.
OK, I.
Mr. Alligood.
No.
Ms. Alexander.
Hi.
We'll see you in September.
A motion carries five to one. Thank you all very much. And again, thank you to the citizens who participated in this. And we'll look forward to seeing the results of New Market Street effort. Next item on the agenda, citizens' remarks and comments. And I will remind people, we are appreciative of you being here. And let me cue something up here. We do request those that are addressing council to limit your comments to three minutes. And for citizens' comments, we have three people that would like to address council. And I will start with the person who signed up first, which is Mary Harvey Halseth. And Kim Dory, you are on back.
Thank you. Am I on?
Yes, ma'am.
OK, thank you, Mayor Friedman, members of council. Recently, the Lexington Skate Park was designated as the worst skate park in Virginia by a professional skateboard blogger. Since my involvement in the initial build of nineteen ninety-seven and many rebuilds through the last twenty-four years, I've met countless volunteers, skaters, cyclists, and skate enthusiasts who worked as a team to make it a gathering place for people that skate. It started with John Ellisstad, our former city manager, and a handful of local ministers and priests who realized the need for a place to gather and skateboard. Parking lots and sidewalks were illegal to use. We needed a legal place to practice the sport. The police department donated helmets and skateboards. Money has been raised over and over and over totaling close to $42,000. Local businesses have donated time and materials and expertise. Dads worked on Saturdays building the pieces along with their sons and daughters. Local bands played concerts to fundraise. VMI cadets and Washington and Lee students have helped numerous times painting and repairing. There's a donated pavilion and bench in honor of two Lexington-area youths who passed away. The last rebuild also funded a maintenance account totaling $5,342. That money has been sitting in the city account since approximately 2012. I have seen fathers pull a skateboard out of a trunk of a car after work. I've seen families teaching their youngsters how to grind or do a kickflip or a tailspin. I've seen lone adults who work nights skateboarding in the wee hours of the morning. I personally learned to skate with Father Alan from St. Patrick's. The most important fact is this: People would use this skate park if it was usable. People would not have to drive to Lynchburg or Stanton or Charlottesville for a day of skateboarding. I'm asking you to heed this younger group of children and parents. Remember that skateboarding is a sport, and as of 2020, it is an Olympic sport. Consider putting this skate park in the upcoming budget. Build a skate park where people can gather with their friends or their families. Maintain it so those in the future can use it, too. Generations grow up, go to college, and move for their careers, but others come after them. We need to think to the future because maybe Lexington could be the training ground for the next Olympic medal winner in skateboarding.
Thank you, Mary, and appreciate your commitment, dedication to the skate park. Next is Kim Dory.
Hello.
Kim, you have your three minutes. Take her away.
Hello, my name is Kim Dory. I am a Rockbridge County native and a Lexington city business owner for seventeen years. I'm the mom of three boys, one of which has a great interest in skate parks. As Mary mentioned, if you look up skate parks near us, you'll find a YouTube video by a professional skater listing Lexington, Virginia, worst skate park in Virginia. Janie and I discussed, we won't go to the video for time reasons. I want to thank Janie for helping me with this. She is so sweet, and I appreciate her help. Basically, this is our current space. It has tons of potential. Met with Jeff Martone and Scott Dameron on site. This is just half of the space. Let's see, the whole space has not been utilized. So my son goes to Mari River. He goes over here with his buddies sometimes, but they have been skating on the sidewalks. They like to they've been run off from Washington Lee parking garage. As you can see, it's not not much to do up there. So I started looking into this, and about the time I got into some good details, a lady on Facebook posted a quote. As you'll see on your screen now, these are quotes taken from her post, wondering why the Lexington skate park is in such disarray. Within minutes, there were tons of comments totaling seventy-two. The most reason I I got into this, I know nothing about skating, but I have taken my son to Covington, Clifton Forge, Stanton, Charlottesville. And when you go to these places, it's it's not just teen boys looking for trouble or a place to hang out. There's toddlers on scooters. There's young children on skates. There's BMX bikers. There's kids of all ages, teens, adults even, learning to skateboard with their children. There are some amazing, I could watch some of these pros all day. So basically, this is a proposal. The picture here is generated by a professional company to utilize the entire space. This company, here's a couple more more views of that. There are basically two options. I'm mostly interested in option one, as you'll see on the next screen. That one would utilize the two pieces, metal structures that we have available are the red items. The white is package one, and the blue is an addition to package one with a couple extra pieces. But basically, package number one has fourteen obstacles and incorporates our two existing pieces. This is a price quote. Let's see here. So package one totals $29,985.73. This includes installation by the professional company. There is no freight included in this. And there's a fifty percent down payment required to start a production. In the next slide, you'll see the name of the company is the American Ramp Company. I've looked into three or four companies, and the reason that this one stood out to me, steel frames. These have a twenty-year warranty. This is an established company from nineteen ninety-five. And one of the questions that Mr. Martone had was maintenance. There is very little maintenance on these products. Basically, every five to seven years, there is a new coat of Max Grip paint, which, you know, there are several, this is just one that is endorsed by the American Ramp Company. For $149 a gallon, it covers 200 square feet. So basically, there is very little in maintenance to these this equipment.
Ms. Dory?
Yes.
I hate to pull the plug on you, but you your three minutes have lapsed. But I invite you to come back and and make a full presentation to council, perhaps at the beginning of one of our future meetings as or certainly even one of our budget work sessions to further educate. I know everyone received, everyone on council received the PowerPoint that you've provided. And I appreciate you being with us this evening.
Well, the the next part is the most important, requesting funds. I would love for everyone to be able to look over. I realize there's 15,000 in the budget for Parks and Recreation this year. And if you could direct me how to, you know, utilize the 5,000 that's already in in this the maintenance fund, that would be great. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Encourage you to contact Jeff and or city manager Jim Halas for additional discussion and and funding options relative to the skate park.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Valerie Malaturno. Val, if you're there.
Thank you very much. Thank you for giving me time. I'll be brief. I want you to know, I'm speaking on behalf of Rara. I want you to know that earlier this year, Rara looked at a number of different options for a new location. We didn't come to the decision to offer to buy the Piovano Building lightly. But since we did, we've been operating in good faith to find a solution. We truly believe that Rara buying the Piovano Building is in the best interest of the city of Lexington and her residents. We submitted a response to the document you received under Agenda Item 10.1 to clarify some things we think are misunderstood. I simply ask you to review and consider it, and I'm available anytime to answer questions about it. Pending approval from the Rara Board, which meets on the 22nd, we expect to deliver a formal cash purchase proposal to you. We look forward to talking with you soon about that. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you for being with us, Val. And the item that you mentioned will be read into the record shortly and making progress together.
Thank you.
And I'm not aware of anyone else that's on Zoom that wanted to speak. And we will commence with the reading, Ms. Alexander.
This letter is from Leon Johanning. He's he was on. Do we need to see if he would like to read this himself?
Leon, would you like to read your letter into the record for us?
It might be gone.
No, he's there. He is with us. Much like us sometimes, hard to eliminate the there he is. Leon, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Hall, I'm Leon Johanning, a longtime citizen living at 15 Jordan Street. Thank you for the opportunity to share my comments regarding Spotswood Park properties and the need to establish a long-term resolution to a proposal that would deny much-needed services to our community and citizens. I don't do bumper stickers or yard signs preferring direct action with the decision-makers that affect my life. I think of the legacy that past citizens have left to us and one of the best was Spotswood Styles, who left us with his poetry and perspectives. It's a truly bad idea to destruct Spotswood Park with something that would not provide a lasting legacy to services to fellow Lexingtonians. The $1 investment that the town made in receiving the gift that Mons McCoy deeded to us as cemetery property will bring a 400,000% interest when you accept Mr. Ben Grigsby's proposal to buy the Piovana Community Center and let it continue to provide much-needed venue and services to our community as intended by architect Umberto Piovana and his wife Alma. They came to Lexington from New York and Italy to retire and fell in love with our hometown. Their final will funded the Piovana Community Center and the library, Rockbridge Library. Many people are drawn to our beautiful city. Some leave a lasting legacy that benefits our citizens. We call them righteous. I implore Lexington's leadership to do the righteous action to maintain and bring the best results to results to our community. Others come and try to take over our culture, our treasure, and many of our dreams. We call them rascals. We memorialize them, memorialize them both with sidewalk pavers here in town. We try to be welcome and gracious to all, but with Charlie Figgott, we were too trusting when he absconded with all the Lexington banks' cash and was never apprehended. Old Mel Greenberg just wanted to make Hollywood movie stars out of many citizens, and in our 1973 naive way, made world news when he left with the funds to join the Actors Union. Captured, he spent a year in the second oldest jail in Virginia, right here in Lexington. Some wag even distributed bumper stickers reading, "Free Mel Greenberg." I hope that we have matured since then to recognize music man types to drink snake oil to our own detriment. I'm disturbed that it seems that every salaried professional professional in City Hall refers familiarly to this latest provocateur by his first name. I do not see how it's a good business to allow renters to be placed in the direct flight path and under our local air ambulance helicopter. Our hospital heliport designated is eight Victor Alpha and is chartered by the FAA. The FBO fixed-based operator is the Carillion Facilities Manager, and she is concerned with any effect on air ambulance services. To be certain that I had a correct understanding, I also interviewed the air care crew at Shenandoah Valley Airport in Weers Cave. Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, your time has expired. And of course, your letter is in here for all to gaze upon in its entirety.
OK, have a good evening.
Thanks for being with us and for the history lesson. It's always a good council meeting when Mel Greenberg is brought up.
This letter from Carol Jones. Dear members of Lexington City Council, I am writing in regard to the Spotswood Drive property and the proposals for development that council is considering. I would like to urge you to wait. An apartment complex is not the best we could do. This is the perfect time to consider what we have and what we want to build for the future. We have lovely, walkable neighborhoods. We have places where kids can play and streets that aren't overly crowded with traffic. These things, in my opinion, are what we want to foster as we plan for the future. What a huge sixty- or ninety-unit apartment complex plunked down in the middle of town be something you'd be proud to show you to visitors. Is it the future you want for your grandkids? I can't say yes to either of these. If the property must be developed, then Lexington should seek to create a neighborhood that would fit in with the neighborhoods around it. My preference would be individual stick-belt houses that would last for generations, along with green space and common areas to encourage community. This type of neighborhood would continue the traditions we have while providing places for families to make their homes for the future. Another point to consider is how the colleges in our town are growing into our neighborhoods and whether the town could negotiate payments in lieu of taxes to help support the city. Please refer to this link below if you're not familiar with this concept. I live on Diamond Hill, and watching the property along the Route 11 bypass become more and more built up with VMI infrastructure is very unsettling. I assume that this is property that used to generate taxes. VMI could contribute payments in lieu of taxes to support the city that supports their institution. I'm sure WNL could swing it as well. I urge you to take time to choose the future that will be best for those who come after us. We don't have to accept a development proposal just because it's the one on the table. Let's be creative and plan for the future we want. Sincerely, Carol Elizabeth Jones.
This message is from Olivia Fleming. To whom it may concern, I am writing to you today concerning the Lexington Skate concerning the Lexington Skate Park project on behalf of the friends and family of Joey Chittam. Joey was born and raised in Rockbridge County. He spent a lot of time when he was growing up at the Lexington Skate Park with his friend Billy Clark. Joey was an avid skater and spent many long hours learning and practicing. Unfortunately, we lost Joey last year at the young age of 24. He lost a battle with depression and ended his life. He was a kind, quiet, loving soul who was beloved by those around him. Now, all we have left of our dear friend is his memory. His love and passion for skating was something that he was known for. We would love to see Joey's memory honored in the skate park project. Joey's sister and I have come up with a simple and functional way to incorporate a memorial into the plans of the state skate park remodel. We propose installing Adventure 2 and planting a few Ginkgo trees at the park along with a plaque. I chose the Ginkgo trees specifically because they symbolize profound endurance. Since Joey's memory will endure forever in our hearts, Ginkgo trees are also very hardy and live for decades. By incorporating a tribute to Joey into the plans of the skate park, more people from the community will be invested in the success of the entire project. If fundraising is needed, many more people will either be willing to contribute personally or assist in fundraising efforts. Thank you for your time and consideration, Olivia Fleming.
I appreciate those comments about, from Olivia Fleming. So I have the memo that Rara submitted to the city manager that was provided to all of city council. So I'm going to go ahead and read this into the record. It was titled, "Rara Concerns Regarding the Agenda Item Update on the Spotswood Development Project, April 15th, Lexington City Council Item 10.1." In pursuing the purchase of the Piovano Building, Rara is acting in good faith to achieve an outcome we believe offers long-term benefits to the city of Lexington and its residents. We think it is in everyone's best interest when city council members have full and accurate information to use in considering this purchase. Rara finds itself in the uncomfortable position of having to refute or add to the information submitted to the city council and the public in the reference document. We offer these facts with the hope they provide some clarity. Rara occupies 60% of the Piovano Building and pays rent that covers utilities. Rara's lease with the city is and always has been intended to cover utilities for space utilized by Rara. This roughly 60% of the building, as calculated by the city. The police department, fire department, and public works currently use three bays plus a storage room just outside the bay area. None of the downstairs area is occupied by Rara, but the community table and the rescue squad ladies auxiliary occupy that area. The community table rents the downstairs, including the kitchen, two days a week. The city sometimes rents this space to the public to generate income. The ladies auxiliary has dedicated space downstairs. There seems to be a misperception that Rara's rent was intended to cover the utility costs for the entire building. To the best of our knowledge, this is not the case. The community table's rent was also intended to cover their portion of utilities, and it was envisioned that the city bore the portion of the allocation due to their use. Our analysis of the 2020 utilities indicates that our share, 60% of the space occupied by Rara, the figure used by the city to calculate our original rent, was $7,144. Our rent was $8,400, or 118% of Rara's share of utility costs. Major repair expenditures explained. The suggestion that a $32,000 expense was incurred as the landlord for Rara is misleading. In 2019, both the HVAC unit for upstairs and a larger industrial unit for downstairs, which Rara does not occupy, failed and were repaired and upgraded. Rara was not asked to contribute to help cover these costs, though we have offered to do so in the past. The $4,000 spent on the doors and plumbing at Piovano were upgrades using CARES Act funds without consultation with Rara staff or the board. Rara did not request these upgrades. Some of these improvements were made to the city section of the building. As with most leases, leasur, the city, is obligated by the lease to do major infrastructure maintenance, including repairs to the heating system. On two occasions, the city has had the opportunity to increase the rent to cover such expenses and has not done so. Though Rara verbally indicated we would not be opposed to modest increases. Over the years, Rara has made many repairs and improvements to the Piovano Building at our expense, consistent with our lease agreement. The decisions the city has made to continue to offer below-market rent to Rara has always been appreciated by us. Rara pays personal property taxes on our truck. We are unaware of any other taxes that would be due on an annual basis. Financial support from the city is not unparalleled by other local governments or entities within the greater community. While we appreciate Lexington's support, we do receive considerable financial support from other entities within the greater community. Acknowledging that 2020 was an unusual year and using that year would be an unfair characterization of the city stewardship. Here is the breakdown of Rara's revenue in 2019. Individual donors, 40%, United Way, 13%, Grants/Others, 12%, Churches, 11%, Business Donors and Civic Organizations, 11%, Federal and State Governments, 8.6%, and Local Governments, 4.4%. Here are some of the key 2019 financial support entities in the greater community, not including individuals. United Way of Rockbridge, $47,000. Churches collectively, $41,600. Devil's Backbone Brewing Company, $14,700. Washington A.L. University, $6,000. WNL Students Against Rockbridge Area Hunger, $5,500. Columbia Gas, $5,000. Mohawk Carpet Foundation, $5,000. County of Rockbridge County, the government of Rockbridge County, $12,000. City of Lexington, $4,000. City of Buena Vista, $1,500. We are preparing a much more detailed analysis for, for your review and consideration in determining a fair sale price for the Piovano Building, and you will have that soon. In the meantime, we hope this information is helpful to you.
From Mark Reed to Lexington City Council. From Mark Reed, candidate for delegate, Virginia's 24th House District. Subject, Rockbridge Regional Department of Social Services Site Selection Consulting Agreement. The Rockbridge County Board of Supervisors and Lexington and Buena Vista City Council's governing bodies, all of whom appoint the members of the Rockbridge Area Department of Social Services Board of Directors, needs to consider if the location of the proposed Rockbridge DSS site, as defined in the Rockbridge Regional Department of Social Services Site Selection Consulting Agreement, is in the best interest of the citizens the Rockbridge Area DSS serves. I would suggest that it is not. The proposed site is within a three-mile radius of the intersection of US Route 60 and Interstate 81 for lease, build/lease, or buy/renovate, build/own scenarios. The proposed site is not even within three miles of any municipality in the Rockbridge area, with the exception of Lexington, the current site of Rockbridge DSS. I'm sure Rockbridge DSS can provide you with any number of statistics suggesting that any consideration of a new site should begin with a discussion of the financial and vulnerable citizen needs of Rockbridge area citizens. Perhaps the discussion is ongoing. I would not know, since I've been unable to find any public record of RDSs meetings since February 2020.
Thank you, members of council, for reading those comments and messages from our citizens and organizations. In my excitement to hear from the citizens' remarks and comments, I jumped over consideration of minutes. They were provided in your packet, and unless there's an objection to presenting them, approving them as presented, we will let them stand in that fashion. Are there any objections? Thank you very much. We'll move on into unfinished business. I'm, yes, unfinished business. And I'd ask the city manager for update on the Spotswood Development Project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Wanted to report back to the city council that as directed, I did meet with representatives from Rara, Ms. Valerie Malaterno, and Mr. John Ellisett, and Jake Adams, and I, finance director, did meet with them to discuss the possible purchase of the Piovano Building. Since this is a negotiation and this is something that can legally be handled in closed session, I won't report on the details of what was discussed at that time. Wanted to further mention that city council has been, is appreciative of all that Rara does to show some of the contributions the city has made over the years that have been significant. So that's the purpose of explaining $700 a month that was received, what the community table also contributes there. And we do recognize clearly the value of Rara and have always contributed and participated in that common, common good for that agency. Also like to note that the support Mr. Ben Grigsby has provided, he's also renewed his offer for purchase of the Piovano Building because he has this great concern for Rara, and that is very much appreciated as well. Finally, I guess I would indicate that based on the direction of city council, I would further like to go into closed session after this meeting and discuss the negotiations with Rara and get direction from city council as to how to proceed from there.
Thank you, sir. Members of council, have any questions for the city manager in that report? I will point out that Mr. Grigsby has extended his offer, which was set to expire April 14th per the contract. It has been extended, I know, into July. I can't remember the exact date. Perhaps someone has it handy, but we're appreciative of Mr. Grigsby's continued interest in support of the purchase of the Piovano Building.
One question?
Yes, sir.
I'm trying to understand the clarification between what was in Valerie's statement about the question on annual taxes and in the report that we just heard. In addition, city council has foregone any payments for taxes that otherwise were due on an annual basis. I've seen some clarification on that.
Okay. In most cases, my understanding is that not-for-profits do pay taxes here in the community, and that has not been the case because they do rent, so they don't pay the real estate taxes here in the community.
What, okay, what real estate taxes would they be paying because they're renting?
Well, they don't pay any. That's the point.
Yeah, but the, the same would be true for anyone renting the Piovano Building. So I, that, that, that probably need some clarification.
So we haven't foregone any payments for taxes that were otherwise due on an annual basis?
Well, I would have to check with Jake Adams on that. My belief is that there were taxes that would have been due. I may be mistaken on that, and I, I apologize if that's correct.
Just trying to get it cleaned up, figured out. Thank you.
You're welcome. I think that, I guess what in the memo Jim was trying to say, that most nonprofits in the city that, that own property, you know, are paying taxes, whereas Rara is one that is, doesn't own property, is renting from the city and, you know, obviously wouldn't pay taxes because of that. But yeah, obviously, since they're renters, you know, they're, they're not obligated to pay any share of taxes currently.
But their tax is, is strictly the personal property tax for the vehicles or vehicle that they have.
Right.
That's correct.
Okay.
That would, and that would change if they became the owner of that property.
Absolutely.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Smith?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Certainly. Any other questions for the city manager? Hearing none. I will, was notified that there's a piece of Mark Reed's comments that were mistakenly left off in the reading, but we will include those in the minutes when they're published. So there will be a full listing of his comments. Next, I'd like to move into boards and commissions and the Blue Ridge Resource Authority. Mr. Smith.
Blue Ridge Resource Authority met Monday. I'll hit the highlights. Cell 2 construction bids came in. The lowest bid that was qualified came in at just about $3.3 million, which is pretty close to estimate. We have budgeted 4.1. Proceeds from the bonds that were issued last fall will cover the construction and the engineering for, for Cell 2 with about $350 in contingency left over. We heard and examined the proposed budget for fiscal year 2122. It does include no tipping fee increases for a municipality. So there's, there's an upside, Mr. Sigler, since you asked last, last meeting. And as a result, we will be advertising for a public hearing next authority meeting for tipping fees and adopt, adopt the budget as proposed, if acceptable to the authority board. We did update a joint procurement agreement with Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission. That agreement before was with the Rockbridge Solid Waste Authority, which is now the Blue Ridge Resource Authority. So to, for some housekeeping, that, that switch was made. There was also a request for proposals from Allegheny County to landfill their waste in, in Rockbridge, but we just, we don't have, we didn't meet the qualifications and as a result, we had to, to, to turn that down. That's my report. Any questions?
Hearing none. It's always good to talk trash. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Main Street, Lexington.
Sure. We met on Tuesday, April 13th, so last Tuesday. The Economic Vitality Committee is surveying available downtown rental spaces. And last weekend was the downtown cleanup. Thank you to the 13 volunteers who screwed up downtown in time for the sidewalk sale and the garden club tour, which will be next, went next weekend, April 23rd through 25th. And this year, the Promotions Committee is organizing a Rock the Brick event. So we're not having Rock the Bridge, but we will have Rock the Brick. And that's on Saturday, May 29th, and Hopkins Green. Genuine Lexington bricks and beautiful birdhouses will be for sale. And you can preorder your bricks on the Main Street Lexington website soon. More information to follow. I'll let you know when that, that goes live. The Walker Program has five businesses that submitted business plans, and three are planning to open in downtown Lexington. And then it's inspired to enhance. Hair and Beauty Salon is one of those businesses, and their grand opening is tomorrow on Jefferson Street in Wendell's Barber Shop. So go visit them. Go get your hair done. And today, Buena Vista unveiled their new downtown mural. So I'm looking forward to seeing that. And there's a few more items, but I'll let Rebecca cover that later on in her report. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Strong. Any questions for Leslie? Hearing none. Planning Commission.
We met last Thursday, on Thursday, April 8th, and we can mute our discussion on the annual zoning ordinance amendments and discuss the scope and membership of the Green Infrastructure Working Group. That's all I have.
Terrific. Thank you. Regional Tourism Board.
Yeah, tourism won't meet again until April 21st, but I did have a couple items to mention. First, an update on regional tourism's event sponsorship program. Just as a reminder, event organizers in Lexington, BV, and Rockbridge can apply for a maximum $3,000 sponsorship grant in round one, which covers events from July 1st to December 31st, 2021. And organizations can also apply for a second round of $3,000 grants for events in, from January 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2022. More details and the actual application form can be found on the regional tourism website now at LexingtonVirginia.com/sponsorships. Also wanted to mention that Natural Bridge State Park has been designated an international Also wanted to mention that Natural Bridge State Park has been designated an International Dark Sky Park. The status required review and approval from the International Dark Sky Association, and that designation has been granted to only 130 parks around the world. Natural Bridge is only the fourth Virginia State Park to receive the designation. And this will make Rockbridge County better known for stargazing and hopefully will encourage efforts to reduce light pollution in the region. This Friday and Saturday at the Virginia Horse Center, there's the United Professional Horsemen's Association, Chapter 18 Saddlebred Show. And, uh, finally, I'd like to invite everyone to visit the interactive map of historical black-owned businesses in downtown Lexington, which was developed in partnership with Washington Lees Office of Community-Based Learning and Professor, Professor Sasha Galaboff, the Rockbridge Historical Society and Regional Tourism. It's a fascinating look at the thriving business community that existed right here in Lexington from the turn of the century through the 1950s. And that interactive map can be found at go.wlu.edu/lexblackbusiness. And that link will also be on the tourism website. I particularly want to thank the dozen students in Dr. Galaboff's class who worked so hard to bring this project to life, and it really is an amazing, amazing project. And that's all I've got.
Thank you, Dennis. Any questions for Dennis? I did want to, um, acknowledge I was made aware earlier today that, um, after 11 and a half years of service to the city, Neely Young has retired from the, uh, visitor center, which Neely a, a very, uh, happy and healthy and prosperous retirement. And appreciate his years of service. Uh, RARO, Mr. Ziegler.
The RARO Board of Directors met on the 7th of April. We are concluding our, uh, fall sports and moving into spring sports, uh, so baseball, softball, kinds of things. But big news is that today Robbie Bailey helped us get our executive director position advertised online. And then we hope to get that also on the websites, well, numerous websites, but of course, Rockbridge County and the City of Buena Vista, but, uh, it'll, it'll mainly be housed on the City of Lexington site, so we'll have, uh, we'll just direct people to the City of Lexington's site. And Robbie, uh, Bailey has offered to assist us, uh, at search. Uh, also though, while talking about, uh, local athletics, do want to point out and uplift a big football game on Saturday at VMI. Uh, the VMI plays against the Citadel and VMI is going for their, uh, first SOCON championship since 1977. And while I'm on the topic of VMI, it was an exciting day today. Major General Winds had the interim, uh, title removed. And he is now the 15th superintendent in VMI's history, which is very exciting. He is now, uh, a permanent resident of Lexington and, and taking over at, at VMI.
Very good. Thank you. Good, good news on all fronts and, um, wish the cadets the, uh, the best of luck for a positive outcome on Saturday against the Citadel. Will note that, uh, I neglected to give them a shout out and undefeated and, uh, quarterback went down and they lost a game, so, uh, glad, glad to give them a shout out and, uh, support them through, uh, and best of luck with the championship. As far as the mayor's report, David reported most of it, um, General Winds. But I did want to make counsel where I received a, um, ca- a call last week from, uh, the representative of the Rockbridge Farmers Co-op, who expressed an interest in working with the city uh, on the VDOT property, knowing that it's still owned by VDOT now in the general services, uh, hand of the state. But they have, uh, a desire and need for expansion. And I directed, um, the leaders over there to, uh, meet with the city manager and begin discussions. But wanted to make you aware of that as we continue to move forward towards, um, the purchase of the VDOT property. And I communicated that, uh, nothing would please the city more than, uh, not owning the VDOT property for a couple of hours, if at all possible. Uh, but that also, I just want to, uh, lift, uplift the idea that, uh, shared with council before and ask council, uh, support and, uh, as we move forward with the acquisition of that property, to look at a South Main Street Renaissance, uh, including the co-op and the other businesses around there to really, uh, improve and, and make that area a much more vibrant part of our city. And a big piece of that, uh, the, or the co-op is a big piece of that with the sales that they do of, uh, equipment through Kubota, Ace Hardware, gas station, et cetera, so they are, um, a, a, a wonderful neighbor and part of our community and look forward to their work with city staff on, um, that Renaissance. And with that, I will turn it over to the city manager.
Well, I've seemed to have lost my microphone, my arm, let's see.
You're on.
Looks like I am on, thank you. Yep, thank you. Uh, first wanted to give the council a little update on COVID activities and vaccinations. And I believe we all know that there is a point of distribution just north of town and vaccination clinics are continuing there frequently and effectively in the old peoples, uh, north of the city. However, as the weeks turn into months, volunteers are still needed to assist in these vaccination events. If you have a three to five hour time slot available once a week, give us a call at City Hall or stop by. We can provide information on volunteering. People entering the point of distribution center need to be registered. Those with disabilities may need help getting to and from their vehicles. Directions are given to those waiting to get in the proper line, et cetera. Easy tasks that help others and each of us in the community continue to reduce COVID risk. And other news, on April 29th at 6:00 PM, the local Department of Health, Carillion Hospital, Rockbridge Area Health Center and local EMS staff will participate in a town hall to discuss vaccination efforts and frequently ask questions about the vaccinations. Questions will be gathered before the event and a panel from the participating entities will answer questions received from the public. This event will live, will be live streamed and all are invited to view it and hear questions about the vaccines and vaccination efforts discussed. Questions may be submitted in advance at the city website. And a Zoom link, link will also be available on the city site so that anybody with an interest can view the panel discussion and learn more about the vaccine efforts. Panel moderator will be our very own mayor, Frank Friedman, so please plan to participate to better understand how the COVID vaccines can protect you and our community. On a less positive note, the CDC unfortunately has to recommend a pause in the use of the J and J vaccine over concerns that some serious side effects may occur. Therefore, the Virginia Department of Health announced that the J and J vaccine will no longer be used in Virginia in the immediate future. Some additional news on recycling. Mr. Smith, uh, watched this, uh, news in this effort, I guess, uh, with others in the community. And this week, Public Works began collecting cardboard and corrugated paper in downtown Lexington, as well as at City Hall, tourism and the police department. We've heard some concerns in the past few months that there is speeding on city streets and that can always be the case. One of the tools we have in monitoring that is, uh, a speed monitoring trailer. The new one has been purchased and has arrived. And this trailer replaces the older model that gave up the ghost and was taken out of service this time last year. The trailer will be placed on city streets to monitor speeds and collect data on traffic flow. So you may seen it around town in your neighborhood in the coming weeks. VDOT, uh, annually has grants, opportunities to apply for, uh, repairs to roads and bridges in our community. Jeff Martone and public work staff will be preparing to submit revenue sharing grant application to VDOT in the months ahead. Pre-applications must be submitted by July 1st and grant review will be conducted in the fall. It's a long process and as these are competitive grants, there is no guarantee we'll receive any funding. Projects being submitted are for major bridge repair work throughout the city. Every month we send out, of course, utility bills and we, we regret when people can't pay their bills and from time to time we cut off customers. And while we're still feeling the impact of COVID, I'm happy to say that we had no water shut offs in the current month. Credit must be given to RARO. They have increased their support for water customers in the community that find it difficult to pay their monthly bill. Credit is also due to the public work staff who routinely work out payment plans with customers who may get behind on payments, but can pay their balance down over time. In our 911 center, we're working as a community with Rockbridge County, City of Buena Vista, VMI, and our regional emergency communication staff to replace the CAD computer aided, that's, it forgets me now, the computer aided dispatch system and the, um, the correct records management system. Vendors and their systems are currently being reviewed by a representative committee of the 911 staff, system users and a system specialist who's been hired to assist with the selection of this system. These systems are being demoed locally and also reviewed in current operating locations to provide information and criteria for selecting a new system in the upcoming months. Utility bank drafts. Public Works and the C Treasurer have now completed testing after many months of the security and effectiveness of our efforts to permit electronic payment of water and sewer bills. Requests that have been previously made for electronic transfer will occur on May 15th on the normal monthly billing cycle. Now come one, come all and sign up for a worry-free way to take care of this monthly bill. Fiber installation. We know that bark has been putting in and we've seen it fiber throughout the community, which is a undeniably, uh, wonderful thing for our community and our residents and businesses. Bark and its contractors do take great care to avoid cutting any underground surface that we have in the city. And there are great many, water and sewer, gas, other fiber and electric, et cetera, are underground. Earlier this week, a contractor cut a gas line on Taylor Street. This caused a significant leak and the Lexington Fire Department had to respond and evacuate two blocks of the street and continuously test for gas concentrations until Columbia Gas was on-site and made repairs. If you believe a problem like this has occurred in your neighborhood, please call 911 immediately. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, council members, unless you have questions.
Thank you, Jim.
I have, uh, two questions. Uh, question number one is regarding the volunteers for the vaccine site. Is there a requirement that the volunteers already be fully vaccinated?
Yes, there is.
And question number two, uh, the speed trailer, does it have the capability of taking pictures when the radar triggers an overspeed?
It does not.
Thank you.
And Mr. Shaw, I gotta trust you asked that question so you know whether or not you're being photographed as you're speeding by. Just kidding.
Exactly right. Uh, and I want to make sure my hair is gone.
Excellent. Thank you.
I was gonna say, great news on, on, uh, electronic payments for, for utilities, that's, that's a great step forward. Appreciate, appreciate the work on that.
Absolutely. And then comments or questions from council?
I do, unless you're gonna address it, are, are we gonna have a budget meeting? I wa- I was sort of hemming and hawing during our last budget meeting, but now I would like to have another budget meeting.
We are scheduled for the 22nd. Remember that correctly?
Yeah, that was the date put forth in the budget calendar as suggested as needed, but I mean, certainly if another date works better or is more desirable, we can call a work session.
Let's, you have, you have, um, planning that evening, don't you?
Yeah, right, until seven, if you want to do it later, or I could.
I believe there was some, uh, concern that we should probably poll council on some dates and times. But certainly whatever is best for council will, will be up to work with.
Oh, wait, I mean, especially after seeing the cash flow on the CIP, I'd be interested in talking about, about our CIP projects more. And then we had the skate park brought up and I would like a little more discussion.
Um, to save you from, uh, a, a really long Thursday, anybody have objection to, uh, 5 o'clock on Wednesday, the 21st?
Not available. Prior commitment on, on Wednesdays.
Um, how, how late is your commitment?
Till 9 o'clock.
Very good. Enjoy.
It could go at nine.
9 o'clock PM. Sure, we can do it after nine.
Let's see here.
Tuesday would work. The last one we did was a Tuesday.
That'd be, um, Tuesday, the 20th.
Available after 5:00.
I have a commitment until 5:15. Work for everybody?
I gotta double check.
I may be in Washington State, but I could probably zoom in.
I wanna.
Yeah.
Okay. I wa- wasn't sure how far you went to check.
Had to go to the other room.
Pretty good. So, uh, we will, uh, plan on, um, April 20th at 5:15. And, uh, Jake and Jim, if you can make the arrangements, we'll plan on that and, uh, it's a public meeting, so anyone who, um, wa- wants to talk CIP, come join us. And thank, Leslie, thank you for bringing that up. Uh, city attorney, Jared, did you have anything for the good of the cause this evening?
No, good evening, everyone. I have no report tonight, but happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
About legal issues for the city, not beyond that.
Correct.
Thank you, thanks.
I have a question for city attorney. Did the sale get finalized for the infill water tower?
Uh, we're working on that. Uh, Mr. Gaskin does want to move forward, so we're, uh, essentially resetting the clock based on the court case, um, taking longer than any of us wanted it to. Um, so we are moving forward on that.
But has not closed, which is that your question, Mr. Alligan?
Correct.
Has not closed.
No, it has not closed. We have not, uh, sort of moved forward tying council to anything new at this point. Um, and potentially, uh, once we move forward, the first step from council's perspective will be to receive a, a plan for the site from Mr. Gaskin.
Excellent. And you'll keep us, uh, abreast of, uh, as you make progress.
Yes.
So the, the plan for the site, wouldn't that go to the planning commission?
Well, it, it, I'm assuming he may use a similar approach, um, that he used before where he sort of pitches the idea. But procedurally, yes, it would go before the planning commission if there's going to be a rezoning or any sort of, um, you know, additional permits that he needs. But then council will ultimately approve that or not. Um, and that's when council will sort of take an active role in making a decision on the, the progress that's taking place.
Because is this, this beginning of the study period then?
Essentially resets the study period, correct.
Very good. Thank you, Jared. And now hearing any other questions for the city attorney, we'll move into new business, Main Street Lexington. Welcome, Rebecca Logan. Thanks for being with us.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Friedman. Can you all hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, uh, Mayor Friedman, council members, city manager, Halaaz, I appreciate the opportunity to join you tonight. I'm gonna give you an update on the reimbursement, the business reimbursement program that you all were gracious enough to fund back in February to the tune of $60,000. Um, I'm gonna have some new numbers for you since this report was presented, um, for the agenda last week. To date, we have reimbursed 48 businesses for a total of $16,717. Each business that applied received up to 400 in reimbursements for advertising expenses, promotional expenses, shipping, packaging costs, et cetera. 32 businesses use the funds for print, radio, and, uh, social media and, um, six businesses received funds for signs, bags, TV advertising, four for promotional materials and eight were reimbursed for shipping. Uh, we have a few months, a few weeks remaining because this program ends at the end of April, but we don't really anticipate a huge influx of needs. And so because this program will end in a couple of weeks, I'd like to propose a couple of suggestions for additional. And so because this program will end in a couple of weeks, I'd like to propose a couple of suggestions for additional. Funds for the portion of the remaining money. The first one being our signs and awnings grant. We are, we would like council to consider four thousand dollars from twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen, the city contributed four thousand dollars each year. Toward Main Street Lexington Signs and Awnings Grant Fund. This grant matches expenses for new or upgraded signs and awnings. The cap is three hundred for a sign and up to four hundred for an awning. Last year, we did not receive money from the city, but Main Street was able to contribute or to continue the program with the help of a W N L community grant in the amount of two thousand dollars. In March of this year, we funded three businesses for a total of twelve hundred dollars. We have eight hundred and thirty five dollars remaining. And I have in my notes here that we have thirteen businesses now eligible, but as of tomorrow, there will be fourteen. For matching funds for signs and awnings. With the exception of two businesses. These are all new that have opened recently or have been in business for less than a year, which is so exciting to be able to say. Based on the year we've just had. So we would need an additional four thousand dollars to fund all thirteen businesses. Once the remaining W N L community grant money is dispersed. The second idea is our destination marketing, which we would request three thousand dollars for. And I've got a whole bunch of numbers in front of you, but basically for the past few years, we have asked the businesses to contribute a hundred and forty dollars each year. Towards promoting the downtown through social media. We're calling this our destination and marketing and this allows us to pay for ads targeting specific areas and age groups tailored for each of the seasons. If you'd like, I can read all of this. It's been a long night for everybody. You have those numbers in front of you. I can promise you that the money will be well used. And just at the bottom of this last part is I do want to say that we are leveraging this money as well by using and promoting the Virginia is for lovers logo. On our website, which then we are reimbursed a percentage of money through Virginia tourism. We're happy to get that. And then finally reimbursement possibly for our downtown enhancement projects to the tune of five thousand dollars. Our design committee is tasked taking on recommended projects as outlined in the downtown enhancement plan. In the past, we have submitted expenses to the city for reimbursement. We did not ask for any money since twenty nineteen. But we have spent almost five thousand dollars on new planters, soil, plants, plaques, materials, etc. These award winning projects benefit the whole community and keep our downtown looking its best. Funding this endeavor would reimburse our expenses and allow Main Street to take on additional projects. So in short, we really appreciate our partnership with city council and your support. And we would like to ask you to consider these initiatives for a portion of the remaining funds. And we acknowledge that. Anything left over will go back to the city in early May and please know that these are. This these funds that we're requesting would go right to these designated programs so that we can continue them. That concludes my presentation. Do we have any questions?
Rebecca, I have one. I I wanted to ask about the the sign on Route eleven that that Main Street Lexington. Has taken over from the women's club and I I just. In some of the projects you've mentioned here, is it possible that that could be a project? I feel like we need to do something with that. The sign does not look good the way it is and I feel like something needs to be done with that.
I would have to agree with you. I our design committee has not met yet this month, but that was on the agenda. And I can certainly. Recommend that we tackle that sooner than later. We did have it in the plans that it would be repainted. And we would do something a little differently with the welcome to historic Virginia, just the the look of the lettering. And then use the rest of the sign to promote some of the events downtown. It's just, you know, it's been one of those years. It just takes a little bit longer than than you'd like, but sure, you want to give us money, we'll use it.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Members, counts have any other questions?
In the the signs and awning grant category, did you say up to four hundred dollars for awning or up to because the. The request is for up to six hundred dollars for awning, so that kind of changes the math a little bit.
Well, it's just what what we're asking is that you just put four thousand dollars into the fund. And then we have those monies to give to any businesses, three hundred for signs and up to six hundred for awnings.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I was asking. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, for instance. Ladles and Linens awning, I think Shenandoah Attic also shares that space. That awning that went across those two businesses got really ripped up in a January windstorm. And so that all you see at the moment are the framework. There's no awning there and they would like to replace that. So that's that's not a new business, but that's something that we we would certainly fund.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'm incredibly excited to see your request for funding for the banner and sign grants. It's a great way to help our businesses put their best foot forward and sharing supportive collaborative measures. So. Thank you for making that request and rough round numbers as best I could tell, it's just shy of twenty seven thousand dollars. That this would spend thirty three ish to return from the original sixty thousand grand.
Correct.
And.
Although we do have a few more weeks, so we may be off a thousand dollars or so, but yes, you're right.
Absolutely. At this point with your report, those are the round numbers.
Yes, sir.
So I would welcome a motion to approve Rebecca's request as presented.
Move that we allow Main Street to use the remainder of the business reimbursement program money up to twelve thousand dollars for these these additional. Programs and the remainder of it would be anything left over would be returned to the city.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just so the twelve thousand dollars that we're allocating, just for clarification, will. Is there an expiration on on those funds or is that? Until.
They're used. There, yeah, there is no expiration.
Okay, that that's my question.
Remember, the five thousand is reimbursement, is that right? Three thousand will be spent pretty expeditiously and then four thousand is set aside for when they're ready.
For marketing, yeah. And honestly, reimbursing the five thousand dollars for the enhancement projects, we could use those funds for the Route eleven sign that Mr. Air has mentioned. So that just gives us money to to keep going forward.
Any other questions or discussion? The motion and the second roll call vote, Mr. Smith.
Absolutely.
Mr. Ayers.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Mr. Alligan. Mr. Sigler.
Aye.
Strong.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much for all the hard work and dedication and. Our compliments to the president and the fine job he's doing. For his own business and the beautiful window as well as all of downtown.
I'll pass that along. Thank you. Thanks to each of you. Appreciate it.
Bet. See you soon.
Okay.
Next item is consideration of a one year renewal of the Rara and Community Table leases. Mr. Alice.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I noted at the last council meeting, I think we all are now aware that both the Rara and Community Table lease in the Piovano Building expires at the end of the month. Directed by city council, I've brought back to you at least for each of those entities. They're basically under the same terms with the exception that they are one year lease till April thirtieth, two thousand twenty two. There is no renewal term, so at the end of that one year, there's not an automatic renewal. There's also no. No language that would allow city council to give notice and have them leave early. So it is a full twelve month lease. And that gives both city council and Rara and and Community Table some time to consider where we are going in the future. What might evolve in the Piovano Building and the Spotswood property. And then, of course, after that period of time. That information that we've gained in this continuing discussion, we can then discuss other options potentially.
Very good. And ask for council's consideration of the recommendation for approval of the one year leases extensions with the Community Table and Rara.
I move to offer the extension lease.
Thank you, Mr. Alligan.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Smith with the second. Any further discussion?
I'll just say something. I was all prepared for to move forward with the one year extension on the lease. But I will say that the memo we received from Rara today does give me some pause that it sounds like the current arrangement. Does not suit either party and I'm a little taken aback that it gives me the impression that. Our low rent of seven hundred dollars a month, which also includes you all utilities, well, utilities except for whatever's in their name. Is not considered financial support of Rara, which I view that very differently. And so I'm a little disappointed by. By that statement in there, but. I guess we can work that out in the next year.
Would say certainly noted and I would also. There there was a phrase in there that gave me. The efforts of preparing a much more detailed analysis for a review and consideration and determining. A fair sale price for the Piovano Building and have that to assume so that what you indicate may have been lacking. In the initial financial analysis may be included in some fashion as we work together on the the future of the Piovano Building.
Mayor Friedman to speak.
Um, I would say we'll, we've had the public comment time, but thank you for.
I just want to say that's a misunderstanding and I'm happy to clear it up at any time.
Absolutely. Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion of council? Hearing none, I would ask for roll call vote, Mr. Smith. Mr. Alligan.
Aye.
Ms. Alexander.
Aye.
Strong.
Aye.
Ziegler.
Aye.
Drairs.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously and look forward to a positive year. For the Piovano Building and its tenants. The next item is a closed meeting. I will make the observation and before Ms. Alexander reads us into closed session. That it's not expected that we will take any action other than adjournment when we do come out of the closed session. And it is to discuss the negotiations on real estate. That Ms. Alexander, if you could read us into the closed session.
I move that Lexington City Council will convene in closed meeting in accordance with section two dot two dash thirty seven eleven. Subsection A, paragraph three of the Code of Virginia, a closed session for the purpose of discussing the disposal of real estate for a public purpose.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. We shall move forward with a roll call vote. Ms. Strong.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Sigler.
Aye.
Mr. Ayers.
Aye.
Mr. Alligan.
Aye.
And I vote aye. We can go into closed meeting.
As we go into the closed session, I would say let's take a couple of minutes. I've got ten seventeen, so if we can be back at ten twenty, I've got a tear in my eye.